Mr. Chair, just an update, let you know that Jim Anderson and Bill Harrington should be logging on momentarily. The link they had was a different link connection.
Thank you for that. I was just sending out text messages asking, do I see Bill? But I don't see Jim. Just give Jim a minute. Just give Jim a minute. So we're just waiting. Jim's having some technical difficulty. We're just waiting for Jim to log on because it's not a selectman's meeting unless you have Jimmy Anderson on the line. So let's give us a couple of minutes and let's see if we can get him going.
Mr. Chair on the phone with him now, um, just another minute or two if you can.
All right, not a problem.
You know, Joe, with these Zoom meetings, you're gonna have to get me a video technician here. You know, I got a dark room and I don't have all my, uh, lighting right.
You look great, Bob.
Mr. Chair, um, I recommend that we can, uh, go ahead and get started on the phone with, um, Slagman Anderson now, um, Amanda's on with him trying to work through it. So he's okay if we get started, uh, in the interest of time and the hearing. And then we'll join when he can.
Okay. Good evening. This is Joseph Botash and I would like to call to order the February twentieth, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, Rentham Select Board Meeting. In accordance with the, with chapter two of the Acts of twenty twenty three, this public meeting of the Select Board shall be conducted remotely via Zoom. The agenda posted on the town's website identifies how the public may join. Please note this meeting is being recorded. As a preliminary matter, this is the Select Board Chair, Joseph Botash. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. So I'm gonna, at this time, confirm member access. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. We know Jimmy Anderson has technical difficulty. We'll roll him in in a minute. Select Board Member Gallo. Select Board Member Gallo.
Gallo here.
Excellent. Select Board Member Harrington.
Harrington here.
And Select Board Member Rouse.
Ross here.
All right. Staff, when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative. Town Administrator Kevin Sweet.
Present.
Amanda?
I'm here.
Yeah, so when I create my account, this password, do I use my?
All right. Uh, I don't see Greg with us today, is he?
No, Greg's on vacation this week.
All right. We have our Executive Assistant Amanda Vazapolo and Technical Advisor for the Select Board.
Present.
All right. So, all right. I'm gonna go right over to, uh, announcements tab one and ask our clerk, Mr. Harrington, to read those.
Yes, Mr. Chair, uh, announcements. Presidential primary polling hours will be held on March fifth, twenty twenty four, from seven AM to eight PM at the Delaney Elementary School, one twenty Taunton Street. Voter registration for the presidential primary election will be held on Friday, Saturday, February twenty, on Friday and Saturday, February twenty fourth, from nine to five PM at the Town Hall, Main Lobby. Ballots may be dropped into the ballot drop box outside the Town Hall, Main Lobby entrance. Presidential primary early voting, February twenty fourth through February twenty ninth at Town Hall. Annual Town Election voter registration will be on Friday, March twenty second, from nine AM to five PM at Town Hall. The annual election will be held on Monday, April first, twenty twenty four, from seven AM to eight PM at the Delaney Elementary School, one twenty Taunton Street. And Rentham Recreation presents a pickleball clinic on Thursday, February twenty ninth at Rentham Elementary. See Rentham, ma dot my dot rec dot com. It's Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Uh, next, let's jump over to tab two before the public hearing. At this time, the Chair entertain a motion to approve the open session meeting minutes of February sixth, twenty twenty four.
So moved.
Okay, motion made by Selectman Harrington. Did I hear a second by Selectman Gallo?
Yeah, can you hear me okay, Joe? Um, can you hear me okay?
You sound beautiful tonight.
I thought I was having trouble with my mic. Thank you.
Oh, all right. So we have a motion made by Select Board Member Harrington, seconded by Select Board Member Gallo. Any further discussion being done, we'll go to a roll call vote. Select Board Member Botash, yeah. Select Board Member Gallo.
Gallo, yes.
Select Board Member Harrington.
Harrington, yes.
And Select Board Member Rouse.
Ross, yes.
All right. So it's six forty. We're gonna jump into the public hearing and tonight's public hearing is an annual one for the sweat funds. So I'm going to, uh, open the public hearing and then we'll ask our, uh, our, uh, Sweat Advisory Committee to open their meeting. So at this time, Chair entertain a motion to open the public hearing for the twenty twenty four request of sweat funds, sweat fund monies.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion made by Select Board Member Gallo and a second by Select Board Member Rouse. We're gonna roll call vote to open the, the public hearing. Select Board Member Botash, yeah. Select Board Member Gallo.
Gallo, yes.
Select Board Member Harrington.
Harrington, yes.
Select Board Member Rouse.
Ross, yes.
All right. And I keep checking to see if Jim pops in. So that has passed. I don't see Jim yet. So at this time, the Chair entertain a motion to waive the reading of the public hearing notice.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made by Select Board Member Harrington, seconded by Select Board Member Rouse. We'll go to a roll call vote. Select Board Member Botash, yeah. Select Board Member Gallo.
Gallo, yes.
Select Board Member Harrington.
Harrington, yes.
And Select Board Member Rouse.
Ross, yes.
All right. So at this time, I'm going to open the meeting to, uh, the Chair of the Sweat Board, Sweat Fund Advisory Committee. Uh, Mr. Preszczak, welcome. And I know you have your staff, so you'd wanna open your meeting.
Okay, I'd like to open, uh, our, uh, Sweat Fund Advisory Committee meeting. I'll call your name and please say present. Joyce Baldiger. I understand she's having technical problems as well. Um, Bob Carr.
Here.
Charlotte Duffy. Okay. And Chris Roman.
Present.
And Greg Preszczak, I am here. So our meeting is open at six forty-three. And we're ready to go, Mr. Chairman.
All right. So first of all, uh, I wanna thank, uh, Chairman Preszczak and Vice Chair Roman and the whole committee. Uh, they worked diligently and came up with a condensed, uh, kind of a summary to try to streamline the process because, uh, we have a lot of people here on their own time who have requests and we just wanna make life easier. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to turn it back to, uh, Chairman Preszczak to go through the list that was provided.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. Um, as I mentioned to you in our discussions recently, I do have a quick update on, uh, this year's prospects for funding. Um, we've got ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars worth of requests. Uh, last year, we got sixty-two thousand, six hundred from the, uh, sweat fund payout. We also have about eighty-three hundred in the subaccount at the Mellon Bank. We also have sixty-one hundred dollars in a sweat fund reserve account that's in the town at the moment. And if you'll just give me a moment, uh, to, um, state on, that on behalf of the, the advisory committee, I would like to mention Cindy Thompson and Ed Goddard, co-chairs and members of the three hundred and fiftieth, uh, committee for a fantastic year of celebration, in particular, making time for an event in Mr. Swett's honor, and finally for returning nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars in excess funds to be reallocated for this year's requests. Uh, that gives us a total of about eighty-seven thousand, give or take a little. Um, so I would like to thank that committee very, very much. And that's it on that. Uh, do you have anything else to add, Mr. Botash, before we jump into it?
Yes, I do. Uh, I wanna echo the sentiments of, that you just mentioned, uh, a- as you and I were speaking, that three hundred and fifty couldn't have come at a better time. Uh, it united the town of Rentham and it was a fabulous event. And I wish I would see four hundred, but I can't guarantee that. So we're gonna have to try to figure something out, maybe do like a three hundred and fifty-two or something. Uh, so it, when Greg and I were talking the other day about this condensed thing, condensed format, he's gonna go through by, uh, each requester, uh, and at the end of him reading the requests, uh, the, the board will have an opportunity to ask a question on a certain item. A lot, a lot of the items we have presented to us have been routine and we've got, we understand the backup and we just wanna do this so that, you know, we can get everybody moving along and back to their families as quickly as possible. So I see that we have our first group of requests and I'll ask Mr. Preszczak to go through those.
Okay, um, just quickly, Mr. Chairman, I, uh, I think you left out one part. If there's anything that any presenter has that is not in the uh, written application that could help us, please feel free to let us know that. And, uh, in advance, I wanna thank you all for your hard work and for participating in our process. So with that, uh, let's go to the first item, which is the Conservation Commission. Uh, Darrell Luce is the applicant and he is asking for, uh, funding in six parts to, uh, um, pave the parking lot at Birchwell Farm. Anything new to add? Darrell, if you're here? I don't think he's here, so apparently you have nothing new to add. Um, let's move on to the next one, shall we?
Well, actually, before we go any further, I'd like to ask the, and I know I have a question on some of these, so I'd like to, uh, you know, as we go through this group, let's, let's ask the questions so that way we don't have anybody hanging for it. Darrell's not here. Uh, I, I'm gonna ask the question that we asked last year and then I'll open to see if any of the board members have a question. This is pretty much the same presentation that was made to us last year. And our comment back to Darrell was we need to get a, a professional engineer to do evaluation to make sure we're not gonna create problems with runoff of water and things of that nature. I was expecting to see a request this year for PE services to do that, not to see the same claim. So for me, I do not support this. And, uh, that's just the way I feel. I will go down the list and see if there's anybody else who has comments. Uh, Select Board Member Gallo.
Hundred percent agreed. That was my comment as well. Uh, no further comments.
All right, Select Board Member Harrington.
Yeah, so Joe, uh, Mr. Chair, if, if this is a presentation that he's put together is very similar to last year's, um, and, and the same question we had is who, who engineered it? How are we gonna prevent it from continuing to collapse? And, and I'll ask the same question I asked last year, uh, why can't we use some type of a more natural surface rather than pavement in such a beautiful area that where now we're paving? Uh, that was alls I had. And again, like yourself, I don't support this.
Select Board Member Rouse.
Yeah, same sentiments. As someone who goes there at least three or four times a week, I can see when we, when, uh, DPW has brought in gravel and compacted it, um, within a few months, we'll get big divots that happen. So there's definitely an issue that needs to be addressed before any sort of paving or any top coat is put in there. So agreed.
All right. So to, to, uh, sum up is I think we were expecting.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt, but it looks like, uh, Dr. Luce is here.
Okay.
Uh, yes, I'm sorry to, uh, be a little bit late. Uh, couldn't get in for some reason, but, um, the, I've heard some of the, the, uh, the issues that you brought up there. And the reason why the, uh, I have not, um, engaged the professional services is I believe that none are needed in that particular area. We downsized the amount of pavement to basically, um, as you know, there's an upper area that's, that's that's, uh, sloping. That area is principally compacted and, uh, a mineral soil. Down below, there's an area that's about maybe twenty feet, uh, thirty feet wide. It's about two hundred and fifty feet long that we look to pave just so that you can get over some of that area that continually deteriorates. Now, the reason why I didn't go with, uh, someone to do the stormwater was last year where it wasn't an official meeting, I, I didn't bother to address that issue. But in this case, the, um, parking lot, the, uh, amount of material there, uh, is now pretty much, uh, um, impermeable as it is, especially on the sloping part. It drains over to a, uh, a low area that then goes into the Birchwell Field. So that any stormwater right there from this area that's basically about the size of a, a larger driveway gets, um, taken off into about a hundred acre wooded area. And from there doesn't, um, cross any developed areas or anything like that, uh, until it hits Diamond Hill Reservoir about a mile and a half south. Um, so, um, I, I did do a back of the envelope calculation just to look at it, not, not doing the, uh, any of the, uh, the calculated methods, uh, TR twenty or fifty-five or, or HydroCAD, uh, because I thought first of all, a bit of overkill. This was something that could be done essentially on a cocktail napkin, just about, just from the standpoint of, um, ignoring things like time of concentration and other hydro, uh, hydrodynamic principles to just say, okay, what's the most rainfall that we could have expect? And I said a six-inch storm and I did the calculation to show that the, uh, the detention pond that is existing there, the little, uh, low area that is over to the side would handle a basically about a third of the, uh, any sort of, uh, instantaneous six-inch storm volume. Uh, so I, I felt very comfortable that, um, that, uh, it would, uh, not pose any sort of stormwater problem.
Once again, I still feel the same. I, I think the date you have is great. And if it could be shared with a PE and if they support it, then I would feel more comfortable. But as we just rea-, we just went through a pretty, uh, massive, uh, parking lot renovation in the center of town and we saw what was involved. Uh, we dealt with stormwater runoff and things of that nature and it's, I, I, I still feel the same and I'll run through the board real quick one more time if they have any change of sentiment based on the comments. Select, uh, Select Board Member Gallo.
No, I appreciate Dr. Luce's, uh, explanation. I trust his judgment, but I still would feel better if we had something from a PE on paper showing us that, um, you know, that was in fact the case.
Select Board Member Harrington.
No additional comments, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Select Board Member Rouse.
No further comments. Thank you.
All right. Uh, Chairman, uh, Preszczak, back to you.
Thank you. Uh, in lieu of the fact that Mr. Luce showed up, I will ask, uh, the Sweat Committee if there were any additional questions that could, uh, add anything to this, uh, in alphabetical order. Either say no or. In alphabetical order, either say no or ask your question, starting with you, Bob.
Nope.
If I was not here, I have no questions. How about you, Chris?
Uh no questions.
All right, let's move on.
Right.
Janet Angelico from the Council on Aging.
Good evening.
Could you uh give us some brief information that you could add to your uh written application?
Um I can tell you that um good thanks again to the Sweat Fund Committee. Um your support allows us to continue carrying on the classes and activities we have at the Senior Center. Um we currently have approximately. Two hundred and ninety-three seniors as of last year. Um who participated in the classes. Um with a grand total of the duplicated seniors being two thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine of them. And three thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine hours worth of activity. Um my balance right now is. One thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars from last year's Sweat Fund money. And we fund our classes and activities. Um again, with many thanks to the Sweat Fund and also from the Friends of the Rentham Seniors. So um with great appreciation, we thank you for what you've done to us up to this, what you've done for us up to this point.
Okay, uh Sweat Fund Committee, any questions?
No, Greg.
I have nothing. Chris?
Nothing.
Okay, Chairman Botash.
All right. Be- before we go any further, first of all, I want to thank everybody who has put in a request on behalf of the board. Uh we appreciate all the hard work you do and uh you know, generally we go by one by one, but I just want to do a kind of blanket. Just say thank you for all you do and I appreciate it. I have no questions for Janet. Select Board Member Gallo.
Questions, Mr. Chair.
Select Board Member Harrington.
Uh no, Mr. Chair, send them in exactly. I think that Janet does a wonderful job down at the Senior Center and uh. Uh I hope to join that activity someday myself. And hopefully it'll continue to be funded.
All right, Select Board Member Rouse.
No further questions. Thank you.
All right, back to you.
Chair, I believe uh Select Board Member Anderson may be dialed in now. I think he's gonna be uh on the phone for this evening. Um Jim, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Jim, thank you. We are, we are going through the Sweat Fund requests. Janet just gave, we had a presentation from Conservation. Janet just gave one for Council on Aging. And we're moving on to uh the Fiscal Library through the Chi- Chairman Pizertcheck. Do you have any questions for the uh requests so far?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, first of all, I just want to apologize. Um technical difficulties. Which is uh seems to be my my mainstream right now, but um I've got no questions as well. As we go along, I'll I'll see what we can do.
All right, thank you. All right, back to you, Chairman Pizertcheck.
Okay, next up is uh the Fisk Public Library and we have three requests, two from Kim. Kipala from Museum Passes and an overdrive subscription online. And uh one from Sarah Del Priori. Yeah, I don't know that last name too well. But uh that's for the Family and Children Programs. Do you have anything to add which wasn't in your present, your uh application?
No, we don't have anything to add. I just say thank you to the Sweat Funds generosity to the library. We really appreciate it.
And could Sarah pronounce her last name for me so I don't ever make a mistake again?
Del Priori.
Okay, thank you. Um any questions from uh Sweat Committee? Bob?
Yeah, I just uh was wondering about something like the um the overdrive subscription, the online books and videos. At this point in time, isn't that sort of a normal function of the library? And would that be something that would be an extra? Uh that you'd ask the Sweat Fund for each year? Or should that be part of a library budget?
At this point, it really is part of the library's basic services. So this is the last time that the this library will be making the request. For online databases or online resources. Um so that this is just. Um this is my first year as library director. Um and this is to pay for the services that we have currently. And um going forward, I will not make this request.
Thanks.
I'm good. How about you, uh Chris? Anything?
Uh no, no questions here.
Back to you, Chairman Botash.
All right. I I my question was asked, so I have no questions. Select Board Member Gallo.
Question was asked. Thank you. Nice job. No more questions.
Select Board Member, I'm sorry, Anderson, I keep forgetting. Jimmy, with us? Like, you have any questions?
Uh no, Mr. Chair, thank you.
All right, Select Board Member Harrington.
No questions, Mr. Chair.
And Select Board Member Rouse.
Dave, no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you both. And uh back to you, Chairman Pizertcheck.
Okay, next up, we have Evelyn Zeph for the Cultural Council. She's requesting a tool cart for the museum. This museum, Old Fisk Museum. Go ahead, Evelyn. You got anything else to add?
Um I don't think there's anything additional. Um I did get quite a range of quotes on the cart. That we want to fit in there and um I think I I checked and some places aren't in stock. Even though they're advertised at the lower price. Um so I went for the most expensive one. Which was actually through Amazon. I just, in case there's a question about the range um of prices that I got.
Okay, any questions from the committee?
Uh I'm good. Greg?
I'm good. How about you, Chris?
Uh I don't have a question. It's more like a comment that, you know, we have our meetings, our our regular meetings in the in the museum. And before that, I actually had not gone in there myself and I'm I'm rather impressed with the history that's in there and enjoy the time that we spend in there and. Uh keep it up.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
All right. I'm actually uh, I don't see, I'm going through my pack. I don't see the request because I'm trying to. Uh five hundred dollars, this five hundred dollars is the request.
Yeah, it's on the, it's on the spreadsheet Chris sent you.
Okay. No further questions from me. Select Board Member Anderson.
Uh no questions at this time, Mr. Chair.
Select Board Member Gallo.
No further questions at this time, Mr. Chair.
Select Board Member Harrington.
No questions, Mr. Chair.
Select Board Member Rouse.
No further questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Back to you, Chairman Pizertcheck.
Okay, next up is uh Selena Zabrowski for Landscape and Memorial Committee. And we've got four requests. Um that the total eighteen thousand five hundred for holiday decorations. Pruning, tree pruning, tree planting and sweat pot common planting. Selena, anything to add? If you could unmute. I see Selena's name up here, but she's muted.
Hi, Karen Becker. I'm also on the Landscape Committee. Can you hear me?
Oh, yes.
Hi, um I'm not sure what um is wrong with Selena, but while we're waiting for her to hop on. I can let you know the one thing we just wanted to mention is that we recognize. In the line for tree maintenance and tree pruning and tree care. We exceeded um the amount of ten thousand dollars and that should read nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine. So we wanted to make that correction.
Okay, um. Mr. Chairman, why don't we just move on for the time being and and if Selena comes on? Cause she did put in the application and we'll we'll wrap it up with her, okay?
That's fine.
All right, next up, we have Rentham Open Space. Alan Selling here.
All right. Oh, that's me.
Yeah, Alan, you put in for uh.
This is a.
Dollars, is it, for uh six educational walks and lectures?
Yes, and we uh continue to the program that we've been doing for several years. Um most commonly, they're held on Sundays in the morning and we get between twenty and thirty people. On various nature or uh you know, related walk. Through uh we utilize all of the uh, you know, the conservation areas in Rentham. And uh. People are very happy with it. Um the past few, we've used Mass Autobahn. And and we've expanded in the addendum I sent you, we want to look at some other uh. Vendors possibly to uh get a little different viewpoint. But uh we've done two so far this year. We're scheduling a third. So we'll uh probably exhaust this year's funds. And uh we thought we would try to add one more for next year because it's been very successful. Uh there was a lot of pent up. The pandemic, we found uh basically surprised at how many people show up. And uh it's just been very successful.
Okay, any questions from the committee? Hearing none. Let's move on to uh Mr. Chairman.
All right. I I have no questions. Select Board Member Gallo.
No questions, Mr. Chair.
Select Board Member Anderson.
No questions, Mr. Chair.
All right, Select Board Member Harrington.
No questions.
All right, and Select Board Member Rouse.
No questions. Thank you.
All right. Back to you, Chairman Pizertcheck.
All right, Lauren Hewitt's here, hopefully here for uh. Public Health Nurses and they're asking for sixty-five hundred for insurance, nutritional supplements and. Utility and oil assistance. Is Lauren here?
Yeah, she's here. She's muted.
Can you unmute Lauren? Can we do the same and come back? Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay, Recreation. I saw Jeff's name earlier. You hear Jeff?
Yep.
Anything to add to your one request for uh? Seven thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars for.
Certainly. Yeah, thanks, Greg. Um yeah, so um first of all, thank you to the Sweat Fund for a longstanding relationship that we've had. Putting on concerts in uh the Rentham Town Common, been doing for many, many years. Um and it's uh run uh just just great. So everything runs perfectly. Um seems that we've had good weather. Uh we average about twelve concerts per year. With a wide variety of music. Um two to three hundred people event, which is fantastic and uh. Already started putting together this year's uh program and looks pretty strong, so we're excited.
Any questions from uh Sweat Fund?
Not here.
No questions. I did one quick comment and that is that certainly, I think we appreciate when the, when you recognize when you don't need certain funds. On a yearly basis and think about it and adjust accordingly and and return some funds back to the fund so others others can use it. So. Thank you for doing that and I enjoy the concerts as well, so.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
With that, Mr. Chairman, how about you guys?
All right. Select Mi- Select Board Member Anderson, any questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh well, first of all, I just want to say that I think that the concerts on the Common have been a staple in Rentham for forever. I can remember going to those concerts when I was a teenager, which goes back a lot of years. But uh they always, does it, they do a good job as far as bringing the community together and uh, you know, I would definitely support this.
I have no questions. Select Board Member Gallo.
Great job, Jeff. No further questions, Mr. Chair.
Select Board Member Harrington.
No questions, Mr. Chair.
And Select Board Member Rouse.
No further questions. Thank you.
All right. So uh Chairman Pizertcheck, I'm seeing that uh Selena is having trouble logging on. And so is in the Public Health Nurses. Uh I I'd like to go through my board and see if they have any questions for either party. If not, we can just move on. I I know we've had some issues last meeting and I think we put in some new safeguards. And uh I don't know if that's causing the problem or not, but uh with do your, with your permission, I would like to just ask my board if they have any questions for either party.
If you want, sir. Uh Mr. Chairman, uh my my committee didn't ask any either because we put it off, so.
You could go through.
Go first as usual and then you can go ahead. Any questions from the Sweat Fund Committee?
Yeah, uh Greg, I had a a question with regard to the border of uh the nurses. On the um energy assistance. And I was just wondering if if they had looked into if these um. People in need or, you know, if it's an ongoing problem and it seems to be going up at each year, whether they've looked into other organizations. That that deal with this kind of a, you know, heating issues. I know there are a couple of state organizations. As well as like say the Saint Vincent de Paul or someone that might be suited to help that in in that area of need.
Okay, anything, Chris?
Uh no, I that that was probably the only thing I had too.
On about for uh uh landscape? Nothing?
Uh she, the one question I had about the uh the pruning being a dollar over budget, but or over request, but that was it.
Okay, back to you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right. Uh so Lauren commented through the chat, we have a higher demand. We do reach out to other resources. So they, this is looks for, I don't want to speak for her and she can chime in on the message, but. But what I'm seeing is that this supplements what she's getting from other organizations. And if I am incorrect, Lauren, yes, she said that that's correct. So to answer your question, this is a supplement. So it looks like the need is greater than the request. And uh so she is utilizing those. All right. So uh any questions? Select Board Member Anderson for the uh Public Health Nurses.
Uh no questions, Mr. Chair.
How about for Landscape Committee?
Uh no questions.
All right, and Selena, if you could type in a message if you hear anything to respond. Select Board Member Gallo.
No questions on either. Thank you.
Right. Select Board Member Harrington.
Uh no, Mr. Chair, but I'd like to thank the public nurses for all their effort. They do a wonderful job uh in the community. I appreciate all they do. Uh the only question I had on the Landscape Committee is um, if I remember correctly, we had some trees that were donated. Last year, I want to say maybe from Briggs or something alongs like that. Have they reached out to anyone to see if we could get any um. Donations from any avarice versus, you know, buying, well, you know, buying them outright. That's it, Mr. Chair.
All right. I'll go to Select Board Member Rouse and if Selena wants to chime in on the uh. She did acknowledge, she said there was a mistake on her pot. It's supposed to be nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. So if uh she can respond to Bill's question asking if there's any other opportunities for donations, will we go to Select Board Member Rouse?
I guess my other question is kind of uh to uh piggybacking off of Bob's question as it relates to the oil assistance. And if there can be any just, i- is that, I'm I'm sure it's tracked and is it a, or, you know, are there certain residents that are. Able to get this? What happens when funds are used up and someone comes later in the process? I guess what I'm saying is, I know that requests are going in and getting uh funds from other organizations and this is to supplement that. But I would want to see, make sure that it's being distributed accordingly because it's a a hard thing to not just. You know, make sure no one's discriminated in that process.
Okay, and uh I don't know if Lauren's typing away, let's. We have a questionnaire and we have specific questions that are asked. So it's it's based on the the applications are reviewed and and I'm sure it's it's, you know, it's hard to. When people start in the early in the season and you get to late in the season, the funds are less.
Yeah.
Kind of hard. My only question to uh to the public health nurses in regards to the home heating. Is there a certain dollar amount that uh that are allowed per family? Is it, is it like you, they get X dollars in the in the grant? And while we're waiting for her to type that, I got a message from Selena. It says donated trees are not in top shape. It's better to buy young trees in tip-top shape. Now we'll just wait for Lauren's typing away. Either a long message or she didn't take typing in high school like I didn't. Once the funds are given, we do not allow more funds to the same person, so it's a one-time offer. It may only have a question, is it a set dollar amount, everyone gets the same amount or is it uh the amounts uh vary depending upon need? It's a set dollar amount, all right. Any other questions? Being none, we got through that, which was great. Uh back to you Chairman Pizercheck.
All right, we have a request from the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Sweet, I believe, put in the application and uh. It's for holiday lighting and downtown holiday lighting, requested is for nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Mr. Sweet, have you got anything to add?
Good evening. Yeah, so this was actually submitted by our former Director of Facilities and Capital Planning Chad Lovett. But I uh now he's no longer with us, I can speak far, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions. This is a supplemental request, it's been annually, um it's it's uh. The supplemental and the luxury here is the added enhancement that we've added to the downtown lighting that's been really well received. Um so there is a a contribution of town general fund operating money that has contributed to this. But without this supplemental budget, we won't be able to provide um the extensive lighting that we've been able to do um over the last few years. We were fortunate enough through some uh grant stuff that I submitted for. Opera funds, which is infrastructure money that we were able to do uh some grant funding to make those enhancements, now we're sort of struggling between. The general fund budget um through the generosity of the sweat funds as well as there was some additional fundraising efforts that were done. By the Alliance Club that that really helped us, so. Um again, these funds really do uh provide the addition, the little enhancement and and um I think. You know, you know, at this point, we've kind of set a bar, um so you know, with without these uh funds and um. We would be going back to less and I think um you know, I think would be doing a disservice to the downtown, so. Also, we're it's in the common and you know, right at at Sweat Park uh. And I think you know, it really it ties in with the intent of uh Mr. Sweat's uh desire for um for the use of these funds, so thank you.
Any questions from the committee?
Yes, I do I do have one one for Mr. Sweet. In the uh in the project overall project cost, what's the total cost generally that we? We put out for for holiday lighting?
Yeah, so it's a good question, it's it's roughly about thirty thousand dollars and because of the nature of the work, um the town is you know, doing the project. We're required to go out to bid uh because under chapter thirty B, under public procurement law, so. We actually this year, we we put out um we put out a bid, we received two responses. Um the most qualified lowest bidder um was awarded the contract, so in any any future years, it is a competitive. Uh but I would say it's fair to say, particularly with some of the additions we've done, which was add the walkway um into smaller trees. Which was a an observation from the prior year um to really kind of brighten up the inner core, not just the outer core. You know, I would say, you know, we're somewhere but twenty-eight to thirty-five is kind of, I think thirty is probably a reasonable number and that was about where we were for for this year. Yeah, but again, it does have to get bid out every year, we can't just go back to the contractor that we used the year prior, uh but I think that's a competitive number.
Great, I have no further questions.
Okay, back to you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, uh first of all, I want to say thank you for sweat funds because this year especially, it kind of all came to life. Uh the common was used for multiple functions during the holiday season. And the most memorable one besides the tree lighting was the rally for the King Philip High School Football Team. Being number one in the state and it was so nice to have the balance of lights in the common, the center school lot complete. It just made for uh it was a hallmark moment when you when you came to the center of town, so thank you to sweat funds for that. Uh I have no questions, Select Board Member Anderson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, just just a quick comment, um you know, the last few years, uh when they've done the tree lighting ceremony. And the board has provided their rendition of the towards the night before Christmas, um I can certainly say for. Without doubt that uh it's always well attended, I know that families always look forward to that particular night.
Thank you, Select Board Member Gallo.
Agree with the comments already made, Selectman Anderson, uh my family loves that event, it's one of their favorite all year. So thank you to the sweat funds for the generosity to allow us to uh to do that, no further questions.
All right, Select Board Member Harrington.
Yeah, I agree totally, uh thank you, Mr. Chair, you know, with the uh your sentiment and uh Selectman Anderson, Selectman Gallo, uh it it it. It's it's a it's a great event that and without the participation from the sweat fund, it would be uh would be more difficult. It's 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 a wonderful event, but uh I appreciate that.
Select Board Member Rouse.
Agree with um a fellow board member sentiments about the um the holiday lighting.
All right. Back to you Chairman Pizercheck.
All right, last but not least, we have Rentham Public Schools represented by Principal Kathleen Maloney. They want to get some funding towards the Delaney preschool playground project. And they're asking for nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars, so Ms. Maloney. Come on down.
Good evening, thank you for your time and for your consideration. Um we are asking for this money to be put towards a universal carousel, which is one of the pieces that we're looking to add to our new inclusive playground. And looking at the grant request, this was one of the ones that we thought was the most important, so we thought we would start there and um asking for your help. And you can thank you for your consideration and we're happy to answer any other questions and we're just excited about the project.
Any questions from the sweat committee?
I have a question, um how long will the project last, is this a a single year, a multi-year project?
A single year, we have a pretty aggressive timeline, uh we voted on the new playground last fall and we're fundraising now. Uh and applying for several grants locally and beyond, um hopeful to install the playground this summer.
Great, thank you, that's I have no further questions.
Okay.
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Select Board Member Anderson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, uh so so first of all, Ms. Maloney, I just wanted to thank you for uh bringing this project to light. I've I've had my grandchildren when they come to visit and we go to different playgrounds around town. And actually seeing this playground, um it definitely needs to be replaced. So I I applaud your efforts to do that, I hope you meet your your funding goal and I would support this project.
Thank you.
Select Board Member Gallo.
Same sentiments, thank you, Ms. Maloney, for all you do, I support this project, no further questions.
All right, Select Board Member Harrington.
Yes, Mr. Chair, yeah, I I I fully back this project from uh start to finish. And I greatly appreciate all the hard work that Ms. Maloney and her staff has put into this project and look forward to seeing it uh come to fruition in the summer.
All right, and Select Board Member Rouse.
No further questions, the information that was provided was uh well detailed and thank you, supported as well.
All right, a- a- and I definitely support it because I I love driving by the school during the day and seeing all the kids out in the playground having fun. And uh makes me want to be a kid again, that and a much bunch of other things, so I'm all done.
Thank you all.
Uh Mr. Chairman, let me just say in closing that uh. We will be meeting probably in March when we find out the final numbers from the Mellon Bank on what's going to be coming from the trust. Um but in the meantime, if any member of the Board of Selectmen have. Additional comments they want us to have, I'm sure Amanda can get them to us uh in an email and we would use them in our deliberations. Um as well as any additional information that could help us from uh the applicants. With that. I would entertain a motion to close the sweat fund committee meeting.
My motion to close. Committee meeting.
How about a second?
Second.
All those in favor? By roll call? Uh Bob?
Yes.
Yep. Chris Roman?
Yes.
Greg Pizercheck, yes, uh meeting is closed at. Seven twenty-three, that seems to me is well under an hour, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we were aiming for thirty minutes, we did pretty good, uh I just got to get back to my cheat sheets over here, give me one second. Like everybody else, I'm a little bit uh technology challenged, even though I got four monitors in front of me. Okay, at this time, it should entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Selectman Gallo, seconded by Selectman Harrington, is there any further discussion? Being none, we'll do a roll call vote, Selectman Anderson.
Anderson, yes.
And I got to get back in the thing, Select Board Member Botash, yes, Select Board Member Gallo.
Gallo, yes.
Select Board Member Harrington.
Harrington, yes.
And Select Board Member Rouse.
Rouse, yes.
All right, we thank all of you, we look forward to seeing these projects come to life and uh. We'll go to uh next item, you're welcome to all stay, we love having you. All right, at this time, we have a discussion of the Rentham Engagement Candidates Forum and with us today is. Our beloved fellow Select Board Member. Mr. McGovern. I saw him here.
Yeah, Joe Stewart is the speaker.
Okay, well, we like you too, Joe, so go.
And if uh if you could allow me to share my screen, then the audience can also look at that, well done, sir. Just a second while I bring it up. There we go. And if you can confirm that you can see it. That would be great. So, Mr. Botash, can you see it?
We can see it.
Excellent, so uh my name is Joe Stewart and I with a number of other uh residents here in in Rentham organized a uh. A group that we are calling Rentham Engagement and my role tonight is to introduce you to it. And I'll give you a uh heads up, I do have an ask at the end, uh which is around um. How you individually and as the town as a whole can help us get the word out uh to to voters in particular. So I'll do a brief introduction, excuse me, I'll do a brief introduction and overview and then jump into the uh upcoming events and then we'll get to the ask at the end. So fundamentally, why, you know, what is it that we're trying to accomplish, uh or what's driving what we're working on? And that is this, um basically, we've got round number seven thousand voters in Rentham. And out of that seven thousand, on average, a little over a hundred show up to the to the June town meeting. And just under two hundred show up to the November town meeting, which is a tiny fraction of the of those who could vote. Perhaps more disturbing is the numbers that are below that, the eighty-two and the hundred and fifteen. So basically, we don't, the the fundamental problem is we don't have people participating or voters in particular participating in town, hence um. Getting to the point of trying to get people to engage in um in the political process, participate in uh in our town. Um I thought I would I would turn to Julie um to ask that she give a a bit more depth on this part of the of the presentation.
Sure, so in the past two years, we saw candidates on the common and the Rentham voter guide appear on the local election scene. And both were well received, I believe the first year candidates on the common occurred, there were about thirty-five folks in attendance. My understanding is that last year there were about fifty folks in attendance, uh Rentham voter guide launched last March and that month. We had, you know, forty-five unique visitors each day and then a spike up above two hundred, two hundred and fifty unique visitors the day before the election. So but the event and the guide are both attempting to provide more information about our annual town election and the candidates running for office. And Rentham Engagement is the natural outgrowth of the candidates on the common and the Rentham voter guide. And what we hope to do is offer voters continued opportunities to learn about the candidates and that they'll elect in our town. So if we know one thing, it's that folks who don't feel that they know enough or have enough info about candidates, don't go to the polls. So we would like to help change that.
So that brings us to rent, you know, who is Rentham Engagement, um it's a Rentham-based organization, uh I want to highlight that it is nonpartisan, so we're not. Advocating for particular policies nor are we backing uh particular candidates. And our mission is to facilitate the opportunity for voters and candidates to connect. So the way that we're doing that is through two upcoming events, the first one is the Candidates Forum. And the second one is the Third Annual Candidates on the Common. Both events will be broadcast uh by Cable Eight and the Candidates Forum will be broadcast live. Uh for the Candidates Forum, um that's a, if you will, a a relatively traditional event. Where uh candidates will be asked questions by a facilitator and a candidate response. And um we uh put a lot of thought into who would be a good uh facilitator. And we're lucky enough to uh to get Jerry McGovern uh to serve in that role. Clearly, we couldn't ask the moderator to do it, right, because he's running for office. I think I'd also like to highlight that the questions or two things about the questions. First off, the way that we're generating questions uh is through a uh an online forum. So basically, if you have uh questions of candidates, you fill out the form and they get routed over to Jerry, that is an. An anonymous form, so we don't know who asked the question. And then secondly, um Jerry will be releasing these questions to the candidates. Uh and they'll be organized by uh the board, you know, by the 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 office that the candidates are running for. The purpose of that, we really want candidates to um come to the uh to the forum, knowing basically what they're going to talk about. It's not a, we're not looking to uh to catch people unaware, we you know, just want to give the. You know, give voters an opportunity to learn a bit more about about candidates. It is the case that uh if there's time, um the audience uh will be given an opportunity to uh fill out a form um live there at the uh. Uh there at API, uh but there's also the case that, you know, there's a good number of questions and so it's not real clear to me that we're going to have a lot of time for for those ad hoc questions, but we'll see. Julie, would you like to talk on this one too?
Sure, um so we were very fortunate, Principal Bottomley connected us with a couple of teachers at KP. And one of them, um Tim O'Connor, who is an English teacher and also is the advisor for Model UN. Really took the opportunity and ran with it and he has connected us with a number of students who are interested in volunteering. We have two students that um work on the KP Chronicle, one is a journalist and one is a photographer, they're going to cover the event. And then we have seven students from the Model UN who will work with us um handing out agendas and programs. Helping Jerry with timekeeping and seating attendees and those. Model UN students will receive service hours for this volunteer work as well. And if we have time for live questions, we would like the students to ask those questions. And something else we've considered is, we do have one demographic question on our questionnaire, which is, are you a student? Are you a first time, you know, a student first time voter? Or are you a exist, are you an existing voter? And it would be neat if the anon, if there were any anonymous questions submitted by students that they had the opportunity to ask those questions. So those are a couple of things that we're thinking about in terms of the students.
Um and then uh in terms of where to submit the questions, uh this information is available on our website and as well in Facebook or if you just take a quick picture of that. You can submit the questions there, uh it's available in the materials that are online, so you can get to them as well. Uh quickly on the candidates on the common, this is a very diff, well, if you've been to it the last couple of years. It's a very uh it's a fascinating way in which to engage directly with candidates. You know, you go to the common at eleven o'clock on Saturday the twenty-third and candidates are there and you can walk up to them and start. and, uh, you can walk up to them and start chit-chatting with them about, uh, whatever it is that you want to, you want to ask. And one of the, you know, big benefits of this is it's, uh, you know, it's unscripted, it's unrehearsed, it's not, uh, you know, it's not, uh, in, in, in front of a big auditorium. It's, it's just one-on-one. It's a great way for people to engage directly. And, uh, some of you may know, um, Andrea Murphy, uh, uh, she and I and Julie, uh, got together last year after, um, after the last candidate comment, and, and that's really what kind of precipitated putting this group together. So now I get to the ask. And that is, uh, how can we, uh, collaborate with you in, uh, driving attendance at both events?
Are you asking the board that question?
Absolutely.
And I'm gonna refer that question to, uh, Town Administrator, because I know that, uh, you know, boards and these individual boards, uh, committees that are formed throughout social media and different types, uh, there, there are some parameters that they, you know, in regards to intertwining with town. So I don't know enough about the legality and to make comments, so I'm going to ask, uh, Town Manager Kevin Sweet to comment.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, um, yeah, we, we do have to be cognizant of, um, you know, the fact of, you know, the independent, um, group Rentham Engagement, which isn't an official town committee, isn't an official, um, entity of the town. So, um, with that in mind, um, you know, it, it does get a little gray when it comes to utilization of the official town, social media aspects, and things like that, that, that we don't typically do for anything, no different than a five oh one C three or nonprofit and things like that. I think the efforts that we've done, um, and I think, you know, the, the work that you guys have been doing has, has been great to get the word out, to get civic engagement, you know, get, um, get the voters and re, uh, residents, um, more information and updated. So the work that you're doing independent of the town's work, which is even, and I know Julie and I, we've had a number of back and forths about the utilization of being able to post the, the town warrant, all those things that are public information, and, and you guys can take and do what you can. But to the Chair's point about us, you know, pushing out as far as, uh, the work and effort that you guys are doing, I think they kind of run supplemental. I look at it to some degree, kind of what, why we have different things like friends organizations that exist to support all the great work that departments are doing, but, um, they have a different mission and kind of entity. Um, you know, obviously, you know, from, as a town official, we can't advocate specifically for, um, town meeting, you know, um, articles, results, things like that, you know, so there is a bit of that gra, gray line. I think, you know, perhaps offline, we could strategize on how we may be able to do that. I know the town and not germane to Rentham, um, getting residents to show up and be engaged, particularly at town meeting and even local elections, um, i- is a struggle for every town. And you can only provide so much information to say, oh, you know, they weren't, that we didn't know about it. Um, you know, we've now enhanced our, uh, our efforts on that. Um, so we now have, you know, social media outlets through four channels. We now have a dedicated news portal, um, direct, uh, website. Um, we have the now the ability for residents, uh, and business owners to register and receive agendas and get all those sorts of things, and we, we rolled out in Jan, uh, July one of, um, last year, a new website. So we're trying to do what we can, um, through act, you know, proactive public, um, press releases, things like that. But it continues to be a struggle. I, I just think there's, to be frank, there's a lack of interest. Um, you know, what you see is generally just, it's kind of to some degree, the shift of, um, unless a particular item impacts a, you know, a resident, they're just generally not, um, tuned into it or, or really that frankly, that interested. Um, so I, I fully support the work you guys are doing to get the word out and get residents engaged, and you know, I think we can strategize how we might be able to collaborate on that, but to the Chair's point, uh, the, there is that cognizant separation of, you know, whatever work you guys are doing versus the town. Um, you know, for us to be able to share and, you know, collaborate, there's, um, some prohibitions, I guess.
Okay, so we'll, we'll plan on, uh, reconnecting with you later this week to, uh, assess what might be possible. And I, I think another, um, maybe flip it around, uh, as the, the second bullet point points out, you know, are there some things that, uh, we can do, uh, to assist the town in getting, um, these kind of, you know, well frankly, the elections uh, out to the, uh, out to people who need to be doing the voting. So, um, so if that's good by you, we'll happen to, to reach out to you later this week and, and, and see what you might be able to offer up.
Yeah, um, absolutely. I'm fully on board to have the conversation. I would ask Joe maybe early next week. I, I literally have no time in the day with budget stuff this week. Every, every, so if you could call or reach out, I'm probably not going to be available just to be upfront, but if we look early next week would be great, and, uh, happy to have the discussion, um, you know, and, and we can have the, within my team and figure out how we best can, because I think really where the benefit comes from you is particularly around the stuff, the work that you guys have done on the town meeting, and you know, even, uh, the Candidates Forum, just to, um, I think there's a lot of value there, and stuff that we can't really do that you can, I think is really kind of creating that, um, you know, the piece that's the linkage between that might be missing, um, that, that you guys have been able to fill. So let's plan, uh, early next week, if you wouldn't mind, and, um, continue the discussion.
Okay. And, uh, Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll wrap up with, uh, with these, uh, URLs. Uh, all of them work. They all have, um, um, you know, people are engaged on them, and they're just different ways depending upon how people want to communicate with us. And then finally, um, if, if there's an interest in talking with any of, any of us, you can reach us through that, that phone number, and, uh, we'll wrap up with, uh, with the thank you, uh, for giving us a chance to, uh, to chat with you. Uh, do you or the board have, uh, questions for us?
I actually have one question. What, what is different from this than Rentham Votes? That's why I'm seeing so many different things start up and move on. Rentham Votes was one that's been active for the last two to three years. Uh, it was getting momentum. Is this replacing Rentham Votes, or is this just another one?
They're, they're, they're connected.
Okay.
Yep. So the, uh, um, um, one of the information channels that we're using to communicate on is through, uh, is through the Facebook group called, uh, Rentham Votes, and as well, uh, Rentham Engagement. So we're just trying to, um, as, as many avenues as we can. We're trying to, we're trying to communicate with people where they are. So if they're on Instagram, we're, we're communicating with them there. If they're on Facebook, if they're on, um, webpages, you know, wherever we can, we can connect with them. Or I should say, and to do so without spending a ton of money.
Right. There, there is no funding from any political parties for this, is there? Select Board Member Anderson, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, actually, I got my, my invitation in the mail today. And, um, if my schedule allows, I look forward to, uh, participating.
Excellent.
We would love to have you.
All right. Select Board Member Gallo.
Uh, yeah, same. Uh, I already reached out to Julie. Uh, I will be at the events. I will fill out a bio, and, uh, I have already reached out to a lot of my supporters, letting them know that I'm participating in these events, and I encourage them to not only go to them, but to get involved. Uh, and I will say that a lot of my supporters, the only concern is, is that this does one hundred percent remain bipartisan. Uh, no one wants to get attacked, and no one wants to see anyone get attacked. And I think that's very important if you want to grow this. Um, so I think from what I've seen so far, that's been the case. It's been nonpartisan, and it's been very, uh, friendly, we'll say, but I think that's, if you, if we want to build something that all, you know, nine thousand residents can eventually get behind, I think that's a critical and imperative that we make sure that that remains the case. And, and the other follow-up question was with regard to the, uh, the live questions that could happen at the, uh, forum, have you given any guidance to these students? You know, like, are they going to get up there and ask nationally driven questions when we're trying to keep it nonpartisan and it's about Rentham issues?
Yeah, so the, um, the, uh, we've collaborated very carefully with, um, with, uh, Jerry McGovern to come up with techniques to manage that. And, uh, you're quite right that we want to have questions that the candidates, um, um, have domain expertise on, right? We want them to talk about, um, uh, or respond to questions that have to do with the town. So, uh, we think we have that covered. Um, I mean, Julie, did, are there any other thoughts you, you might want to add there?
Only that the question, I believe even the live questions, assuming that they are submitted by, uh, form, would be vetted before they're shared.
Yeah.
And, and our intent, and I will say, Chris, to your point, our intention is very, very much to create an atmosphere where folks feel comfortable and want to do this again. Like, I know it's, I know that it will be not that comfortable for some folks, right? Because speaking in public isn't everyone's favorite thing to do. But we want to create an environment that it's, you know, that's why we're releasing the questions, so folks don't feel like they could, um, be ambushed or, you know, be asked questions that put them in an uncomfortable position. Um, we really want to create an environment that, that sets this up for success. And also sets up, you know, our residents to learn more about the candidates that they're going to vote for.
Right.
Great. No further questions, Mr. Chair.
All right. Select Board Member Harrington.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, yeah, appreciate the ethics that, uh, you know, you and your committees do to try and engage the voters, uh, um, I, I, I support it a hundred percent, and, um, I, you know, I'd love to see the voters out on, in the masses. It is what it is. Thank you.
And Select Board Member Rouse.
Yes, I appreciate all the work that's been put into Voters Guide and now Rentham Engagement. Is Rentham Engagement now on Instagram? I see Rentham Voters.
Um, Rentham Engagement has, does not have its own Instagram page yet. I shared on behalf of, um, Rentham Engagement, but that is, oh, my weekend project.
Okay, just making sure that we're outreach to everyone for those folks who aren't on Facebook. I'm not a big social media person, so just wanted to ask, um, having benefited and participated from the Candidates on the Common last year, great event. I felt it was great exchange with residents, that casualness of it, minus it being so cold. We're hoping that it doesn't happen this year at the end of March. That was the only thing, um, but it was beyond spectacular. So I'm looking forward to seeing the forum this year. I'll be attending, um, and, and listening to the individuals running. So looking forward to see how that is run, and I'm pleased to see that the due diligence with kept questions being submitted and vetted prior to being asked, I think is just a nice, important piece of that process that you've instituted. So that's great. Um, thank you again and, uh, for your efforts. And I do believe voters do show up when they have, um, when there's a reason for them to speak, right? When they're passionate about, uh, issues and what's going on. So I think it's beyond, you know, just getting voters to show up, but for more communication and education about the different things that are happening in our town, so they understand the impact that it has on all the residents and things that are going on.
Yeah, completely agree with you.
And, and I will be there also, so I could see what I'm in store for next year. Uh, but, uh, you know, having done this for so long, in the past, there used to be, through the Citizens Alliance, we would have a, a, uh, a citizen, a Candidates Night, and I could see, uh, you know, I think, uh, Mr. Pizercheck had attended some of those. And, and my first one, I went to as my first running, uh, everybody got up there and they asked questions, and nobody had any questions from them, and then they said, okay, candidate for selectmen, and they introduced me, and I looked up, and there was like twenty-seven people in line. And it was just like being at the batting cage, just hitting one at a time, one at a time, and I got through it. And I, I was humbled by it because I, you know, it's, it's, it's good to be out there. People said, you know, you don't want to do that. No, go out there, answer the questions. Tell the people who you are, because it's, you got to get your message across. And, uh, you know, I did it, uh, first time I was by myself. Second time, I had somebody again, uh, running against me, and it was, you know, for me, it was humbling, and so I encourage, but I also want to make sure that the questions that are asked, people need to understand wh- who we are. As a selectman, we're basically a policymaker. We're not the mayor. It's, it's, so people have to really understand what the positions are, the assessors' position, the, uh, planning board, what they do. Uh, because, you know, I see a lot of times on social media, people will comment, and I want to comment, but I'm not a social media guy. You know, you'll see pictures of my grandchildren, that's about it, but it's, it's something that I, I don't like to get into deliberation. Sometimes I've actually reached out to Amanda and said, you know, Amanda, reach out to this person, let's get them on an agenda. But a lot of the things that they think we do are out of our purview, and I think we need to really have a good part of it is to have a good definition of what each position people are running for. Julie, I see you have your hand up. I don't know if you're saying hi to me or you want to speak.
I just wanted to mention, um, to your, uh, what, to your point about, you know, not the, the old Citizens Alliance and kind of, you know, not really knowing what you were in for, and then all of a sudden you have twenty-seven people standing there to ask you questions. We did develop an agenda, and that is posted on the Rentham Voter Guide, um, forward slash W E. So all the candidates, um, should have a, a good sense of how the night will play out, and that it won't be, um, they will not have to ask twenty-seven questions, answer twenty-seven questions in a row.
All right, good. Any further questions? Being done, we thank you. We look forward to the event, and hopefully some of the comments you heard today will help make for a great platform and a very informative evening, and also, uh, the one on the common, I was the first, one of the first ones to do that, and, uh, I loved it also. But I agree, Michelle, it's a little cold. Uh, all right.
Thank you for the time.
All right. Next, we're going to go over to tab five. So, uh, this is just a procedural thing. It's time to open the warrant and to close it. So at this time, the chair entertain a motion to open the warrant for the June third, twenty twenty-four Spring Town Meeting on March first, twenty twenty-four, and to close the warrant on April eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Still moved. Still moved.
Motion made by Selectman Anderson, seconded by Selectman Harrington. I'm sorry, backwards. Selectman Harrington made the motion, Selectman Anderson made the second. Is there any further questions? Being done, we'll do a roll call vote. Select, Select Board Member Anderson.
Anderson, yes.
Select Board Member Botash, yes. Select Board Member Gallo.
Gallo, yes.
Select Board Member Harrington.
Harrington, yes.
And Select Board Member Rouse.
Rouse, yes.
That passed five zero. Let's jump over to tab six, and we have some language in front of us regarding the, uh, the debt exclusion, the language for the tri-county debt exclusion. And I know this was, uh, Mike King, our finance director and tax collector is with us. Mike, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the Town's Bond Council has drafted language, um, for the ballot question, and the language is very similar to that of what was approved, um, on the ballot question back in the fall.
Kevin, do you have anything to add?
No, Mr. Chair, this has been, uh, the language was, was provided by Bond Council, has been reviewed by Town Council. Um, both are good with it. I recommend, uh, we move forward with this language on the ballot. I know we've discussed in fire meetings, it's not, um, ideal timing-wise, but unfortunately, we don't really have timing on our side. Um, you know, as, as we're going to be looking at, um, this is really an initiative to move forward with being able to fund the obligated or committed debt that the town's going to be required to do, um, for, uh, FY twenty-six budget. Um, so the timing of this, uh, as is, you know, ideally, we'll look at a, an approved debt exclusion, um, and we'll be looking at our payment, uh, real payment, um, hitting in FY twenty-six. FY twenty-five will be a small interest payment for the ban, the bond anticipation note, um, that will be due in FY twenty-five. Mike and I have, um, have budgeted for that as, uh, part of, um, the assessment for tri-county. So, um, again, this is really for FY twenty-six and beyond. As I've said in the past, the, the reasoning behind here is, uh, there is, there is zero uh, levy capacity to be able to handle, um, the approved project, uh, for tri-county under the existing, um, uh, levy, uh, the town already operates, uh, with a budget structural deficit, uh, where we utilize one-time monies to, to balance the budget. Um, this would be a crippling, uh, impact to town operations, which would ultimately be more like impacts to the Rentham Elementary School as well as public safety, uh, due to the extensive amount of the principal interest payment, um, you know, in the, the budget resources. There's no, you know, the town of Rentham's budget doesn't have, um, gravy, if you will, and then we only have uh, very few items that have any kind of discretionary. I say that because the KP budget is an assessment that we don't have any control over. The tri-county budget um, is a, is an area we don't The tri-county budget is, is an area we don't have any control over. And also discretionary increases in costs such as retirement, health insurance, employee benefits, those things, there's no discretion on. So that really leaves limited areas where if we do have to fund this within the, within the budget, with, if, if a debt exclusion didn't pass. The only way to do that would be really our, our bigger department impacts, which I said again, which would be the Rentham Elementary School and, and potentially even into public. So kind of dire to get the word out there. I know we talked at our last meeting, trying to figure out a messaging campaign and communication. I'll be working with JGPR, the town's PR firm, working through the, our social media links, the town's website, working with Cable 8. Mike and I discussed today about maybe doing a recording, a short, a short brief, just kind of why with Cable 8, as well as maybe even a, a static fact sheet that they can run in between, in between planks, just to get more and more people out there. Also discussed with Chief McGrath, who has the largest following through the Rentham Police Facebook. We're checking with Ethics Commission on his ability to be able to publish something, particularly because of the impact that it, it could potentially have with cuts to public safety. So that might be a, a option. I mean, typically they do allow not advocating one way or another to necessarily support or not support, but to be able to provide just straight facts. So, you know, I think his, his Facebook channel is up somewhere absurd, up around like 15,000. So that's a huge, huge following, both in town and out of town. But, so I think the biggest, the biggest goal for us here is going to be just trying to educate the residents who may not necessarily have a tie to tri-county or may not necessarily see tri-county as something that they necessarily care about. Not supporting this funding mechanism. The town does not have, the, the question of whether or not we, we agree or we disagree on building it has passed. The town of Rentham passed this project 80%, was the largest pass approval rate of the 11 communities. So, you know, again, we got a limited time over the next six weeks, but we're going to try to work on getting a communication plan rolled out so that this ballot question can, can, can move forward. I'm happy to answer any of the questions. You know, Mike and I have been working closely on this and, you know, impact. And, you know, unfortunately, as I've said in, in prior meetings, other projects that are local projects, that we're asking the question, do you want to build? And are you going to pay for it? With, with the way, because of the regional district and the way it had to play out, we've asked, do you want to build it? And then months later, we're going to ask, are you okay with paying for it? So it's, it's a little bit off. A local project just wouldn't get built if the debt exclusion didn't pass. And, you know, I provide that information for the others that are listening, not for the board, because you've heard me say this many times. But that's kind of where we're, you know, part of what the struggle is here with getting folks educated. And, you know, we overwhelmingly have passed to build it, but months later are now asking you to pay for it, which can be a, a totally different conversation. Where we didn't, we weren't able to ask it within one question or one ballot. So that, that's why we're in the place we're at now.
Great. Select Board Member Anderson, any questions?
No questions, Mr. Chair.
All right. Select Board Member Gallo.
The only question I have is can we also utilize the billboards, Kevin? Don't we get certain access on the billboards?
Yes. We do. We, we do have advertising time. I, I will, I will work with Stephanie on, on what that would look like. They've been great to work with from Clear Channel and now Carol. So we have two billboard on both, you know, on Route One, that we do have messaging time that would run on a, you know, on a feed. We'll work with getting something up on there as well. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Select Board Member Harrington.
Just took, thank you, Mr. Chair. Kevin, two questions. One, can you do a reverse 911 message type of thing to the residents? And then secondly, is the bond rate locked for the whole term or is it a variable rate?
Yeah, so the project hasn't been, hasn't been bonded yet. They're moving forward. So FY '25 will have a ban, which is a bond anticipation note. The, the schedule that I provided at our last meeting is kind of a ramp up schedule. So it's a little bit shorter in the first couple of years and it's pretty steady for about many of those years. I think they're using a, a, I believe that schedule, Mike could correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe they're using like a four and a quarter percent as an interest rate. But that's, it's, you know, I think is a conservative estimate now of where, from a municipal borrowing or, you know, a, a public borrowing. But so the answer is, we don't know until they ultimately go out for the full borrowing, which will probably happen, I think, in, in '26 is when they look at that. So that's why in that, that time, that's when it kicks in for the principal interest payment, where 25 is just the interest. Not only is it the interest, but it's a ban and it's a lot smaller amount of money. So that's why we're able to cover that 58,000 or so within the budget. Not ideal, but we can handle that.
Right. That was just the initial interest?
That's just the interest on the ban. So the bond anticipation note for a small amount of money, just to get them ramped up, it won't be for the full amount. As that progresses and they know what the full need is, they'll then go out for, for borrowings. And I think, like I said, I think on that schedule that, that you guys saw is a 4.25% interest rate. Once they fuck to go out, then we'll be locked in on those fixed kind of escalation. So it's an escalation up and then on the back end, I think there's a couple of tailoring's off in the last few years on a 25-year borrowing. One thing, Mr. Chair, if I could just add, also for folks listening, we've talked about it as well as the, the only debt exclusion the town has is King Philip. The KP debt, which is excluded debt, will roll off in FY '27, but our, so our last payment will be FY '26. So we will, as part of this messaging, the, we, you know, we will be sharing what the estimated average impact to the average residential, single, you know, residential home as well as the commercial. But then we're also, Mike and I discussed today, is I'd like to be able to show, you know, we, that's easy to do, but we haven't done a show. If, when the FY '26 last payment for King Philip rolls off, that number will actually go down until future borrowing potentials. So even though it might, I think the average is around 155 or something for the average, average home residential piece. But some factor in that is all, would, would actually drop if the cost comes off for the last payment FY '26 for King Philip. So that, that is a caveat that, that helps, because we're rolling off about a half a million dollars of a payment, of a debt exclusion payment every year for KP as well. So.
And then the 911 reverse call, is that an option or no?
Yeah, it's an option. I mean, I think that's really more of a, a policy discussion that we, you know, that we want to have on how we want to, and what we want to do that far. We do typically, we do have that reported to us, so we have that ability to send that out as emails, text messages, phone calls, or just one or not the other. You know, we, we have you best as notice for town meeting, you know, and things like that. So with this, it might be an opportunity, because as you've heard, those recordings and things are, are short. So it might be just awareness that, you know, the town's local election will have a ballot question with regards to tri-county debt exclusion. And then go to the town website for additional information. So we won't be able to get into any explanation, but at least let the residents know that the debt exclusion question is going to come up on the local election and then recommend that they go to, you know, a particular location to find additional information. So that, that is an option. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Great. Select Board Member Rouse.
No further questions than what's been discussed. Thank you.
All right. Okay, let's move on to tab seven.
Thanks, Mike.
At this time, the chair and taken motion to sign the warrant for the April 1st, 2024 Annual Town Election.
Still moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
You know, I got to give this one to Michelle. So.
Do it.
Seconded by Selectman Anderson, seconded by Select Board Member Rouse. Any further discussion? Being none, we'll do a roll call vote. Select Board Member Anderson.
Anderson, yes.
Select Board Member Botash, yes. Select Board Member Gallo.
Gallo, yes.
Select Board Member Harrington.
Harrington, yes.
And Select Board Member Rouse.
Rouse, yes.
Right, that passed 5-0. So next, we have an application for a BNO license for the Hockamark Area YMCA. And Amy Doan, is that correct?
Doan.
Boy, oh, welcome, Amy. We, we welcome you here. This is something we've done in the past, if I'm mistaken. You've had these functions. And the fundraiser for the YMCA will be at Lake Pearl at 299 Creek Street. And it looks like the, what is, I'm just trying to see, I missed the date.
April 25th.
April 25th. Oh, there it is, April 25th. I saw November 1972. I'm like, holy smokes, that's a little bit late. And I wouldn't be able to go to that because I wasn't old enough to play BNO back then. So it's basically a form of bingo. It's a fundraiser, correct?
Yes.
All right. I have no questions. Select Board Member Anderson, any questions?
No questions. Wish you luck.
Thank you.
Select Board Member Gallo.
Sam, good luck, no questions.
All right. Select Board Member Harrington.
No, no questions, Mr. Chair.
All right. And Select Board Member Rouse.
No questions. I hope it's a great event.
Thank you.
At this time, the chair and taken motion to approve the use of electronic signatures on the BNO license application for the Hockamark Area YMCA. I just want to go like this when I say that, as the board has no objections to the license being issued.
So.
Second.
So that, I'm going to get over to Chris, because I heard that one best. Chris made that motion and Select Board Member Harrington was next. So he seconded it. Any further discussion being none, roll call vote. Select Board Member Anderson.
Anderson, yes.
Select Board Member Botash, yes. Select Board Member Gallo.
Gallo, yes.
Select Board Member Harrington.
Harrington, yes.
Select Board Member Rouse.
Rouse, yes.
All right. So that passed. We wish you luck and let us know if we'll be looking for the advertisements. If there's any way we can support, we will.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
All right. And one, one question, Amanda. I'm all set with you, but Amanda, I just thinking on the warrant, you need wet stamp signatures, correct?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
All right. So please stop by Town Hall. When do you need to post it by?
Uh, I am not sure when Cindy needs that by.
Just let us know, but I'll try to get out there sooner than later. Okay. So we're going to go over to tab eight. And before we go in, I'm sorry, is it tab eight? Tab nine. Yes, tab nine. And before we go to tab nine, last, last meeting we had, we spoke about the MBTA communities. We had a presentation. And I, I've never seen so much feedback from that meeting. We had, Amanda, correct me if I'm wrong, but like over 100 viewers for that meeting? Not mistaken? It was. Was that correct? I was trying, it seemed like there was 1,000 watching on my screen, but it was a well-attended meeting. We got a lot of feedback from residents. And, you know, for me, I, I am a kind of a history buff and I listen to audiobooks. And there was one passage that I shared with Michelle yesterday, because I Googled it. And it's from Ronald Reagan's farewell address on January 9th, 1989. I'd like to share a part of his speech with you because it, it makes me feel, it feel, to me, it feels appropriate for this conversation. "Ours was the first revolution in history of mankind that truly reversed the course of government. And with three little words, 'we the people,' we the people tells the government what to do. It doesn't tell us. We the people are the driver. The government is the car. And we decide where it should go and by what route and how fast." Almost all the words in the Constitution, almost all world's constitutions are documents in which government tells people what their privileges are. Our Constitution is a document in which we the people tell government what is allowed to be done. We the people are free. And that just relates to this to me at so many different levels. Because when I look at what has happened to other communities, you know, we, we saw a letter from Milton. Milton voted against doing this. And a letter from the lieutenant governor that went out to him in regards to a grant that they were issuing him, but if you don't vote yes and pass this, you're not getting the grant. And that's like the opposite of what our Constitution is. So in this, what we did was I worked and compiled some letters to express how we feel to the governor, to our state senator, to our state rep. And those letters were circulated. And this is just like a first draft. And it's something that I would like the board's input, whether you favor doing these letters and sending them out or not. Changes. I know that the red lines you have there, Amanda kind of went through and, and fixed some of my grammatical errors. Unfortunately, going through Boston Public Schools during busing, it kind of, we suffered in certain areas and mine was grammar. And so she was very helpful. I don't know if everyone's had a chance to read these letters. You know, the, the, as you can see, I didn't plagiarize, but some of the contents in the body is similar. But it's basically asking for some assistance, you know, it's, comes down to is we've participated in programs that is, that are funded by the state, like MAPC, to create a master plan to listen to our residents and to govern on what they want, we the people. And what they're asking is, I think, something that they're not listening. And that's what these letters are for. I, I don't know what more to say, you know, these, like I said, the letters themselves, it's a base, it's a foundation. And is it something we want to move forward with? It's just, it's, you know, we also have a letter from our state rep with another option. But I, I think we just need to basically say, you know, we're not saying no, but we're just saying no to the density. And we're willing to work with this. And I'd like to get people's feedback on these. Whoever, I'm not going to put anybody in the spot. Whoever wants to go first to speak, just let me know and I'll let you go.
Sure.
Go ahead. Chris.
So. So, so, Mr. Chair, I, you know, per my, per, per my comments last meeting, nothing's changed. I, I really find issue with the constitutionality of this. It's as Jimmy, Jim Anderson has said, and I've repeated what he said and agree with him, it's an unfunded mandate. We, we, why do we have a home rule charter if they're going to dictate stuff like this to us? Why do we have a planning board? Why do we, why do we spend all that time and money that I was on the, the steering committee on the master plan? You know, and furthermore, I've talked to other communities and a lot of people believe that like, we're not even really a, a, a real adjacent MBTA community. The, the intent of the zoning was to put high-density housing around train stations so that people could live very close to train stations and then commute in and out of the city or where they were going. We, if I'm not mistaken, we don't even have access, direct access by public transportation to a train station. So it just, it's, I think it's a stretch. I, I, you know, I know there's a lot of towns fighting this. And everyone that shakes their head and says, we're never going to win, we're never going to win, we're never going to win, refer back to we the people. Because all it takes is a few communities to say, no, we need to pump the brakes. This is not what our voters want. This is not what our people want. And by the way, let us determine what our voters want and push back. And again, have a contingency plan. I'm not saying we, I'm not saying that we shouldn't assume that, you know, God, worst case scenario, that we have to do something. We should have contingency plans. And I know that we're working on contingency plans right now. But I definitely agree with pushing back, pumping the brakes. And I think we need to collaborate with the Holden's of the world, with the Milton's of the world, with all the other communities that are, Bellingham, that are showing that they don't agree with this and see what can be done. And I'll leave my, I'll leave it at that. So I do support the letters. I'm not going to wordsmith your letters. They look great for the most part. It gets the intent across and I just think we have to push back.
All right. There, there is one change I definitely want to make in these letters and that is, you know, the, I, I did do a little bit of online research, but as I do a little further, it's, it's, I think it might be incorrect. The, the vacancy rate of 16%.
Yeah, that's, that's not right.
I think we take that out and just put that, you know, we do see, we do see a need for a, a small amount of rentals. But I think what people in Rentham do is they're more invested in Rentham. They, they're a purchase. They're, they want to buy the American dream to own a piece of America, to own a piece of Rentham. So, you know, to, we, we have a mix on that we're looking at of purchase and rental. And I think we just take that number out and just, you know, move forward.
I also don't know that you want to reference specific projects. I don't know that you want to reference the project that behind, you know, the Crosby and the Galaxy, the, the, the. I don't think you want to reference those projects. The, 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 I don't think you want to reference those projects per se, but I just want to say, I heard a lot of misconceptions that. People were in support of this because we need more affordable housing, there's no affordability component to this, there is no. Uh there is no age restriction to this, and actually, it's gonna negatively affect our ten percent threshold. To make us susceptible for forty B projects, where we further have no control, and it's a buyer right development. So this just affects us negatively on multi tiers, didn't we just have a town meeting where the residents came out in full and said? We want to make the decisions for our town, if I, if I was at a different town meeting, then I'm sorry. But this seems complete, thi- this is way more, in my opinion, this is way more of a big deal. Uh than what we came out staunchly supporting, given residents the right to, you know, to control our own destiny. So again, with that, I digress, but there is misinformation going on out there that we need to make sure that we, that we correct.
And, and, and you're right, to, to quote a project that's not even fixed in stone yet, but the zoning in Village B. Is a preparation for what we think the model should be, uh with some age restricted, with some affordability, with some rentals. And with some purchase of tri- duplex, triplex, that's what the Village Zoning B has. So if we can wordsmith, and, and I'm gonna rely on my, my ace wordsmith Amanda to change that uh verbiage about the vacancy. And the uh, and the uh, the project, and just go to refer to Village B. And to uh take out the, the number, and that's the only thing that came, uh select board member Harrington. You're muted.
Mr. Chair.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, go ahead.
So as, as I indicated in the previous meeting, uh I, I'm opposed to them forcing it down our throats. I'm not opposed to changing some zoning to make it a little bit better for the community, uh I agree that we should write a letter, I think we should take specifics out of it. With regards to the, you know, current project that, that, you know, was on the table, uh whether come to fruition or not, I don't think. We should label specific projects, uh I totally agree that we should request additional time. To put something together and use the state school property as also a possibility for future development. Other than that, I, I don't want to beat a dead horse, I think everything we, necessary has been said, and uh. When we do finally come to agreement on the particular letter, uh that, that, you know, once it's agreed, that the way it's written in the verbiage. I think we should utilize live signatures versus automated, that's it.
Right, select board member Rose.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair, I, my sentiments from two weeks ago obviously still stand, I'm, I'm very passionate about this. And feeling that it is very unconstitutional and will certainly change the, the charm and culture of this town. Um as well as every town and city in the state of Massachusetts. Um regarding the letters absolutely should be sent, I, that was some of my changes to make it a little bit more generic. So I'm glad to see that Amanda will help with that, I also think that doing after these are sent, perhaps doing, you know. Uh maybe writing an editorial in the Sun Chronicle, again, for educational purposes, that select board. Uh member Gallo has, has pointed out, there's a lot of misinformation out there, there are a lot of threats. That are going on with the Boston Globe editorial that recently came out, just, you know, that you must comply, you must comply. I have had some great conversations with members of the planning board and the grassroots group from Milton. And most recently, one um yesterday after their vote, um where the town voted, um forty-four percent showed up. The no votes won by uh four hundred and some change, they are now non-compliant. They were required to give their information by December twenty twenty-third, because they're an MBTA community. They have not received any sort of um information or feedback from the state yet, um. They informed me, and I wasn't aware that Rockport has currently um is suing this, is has a lawsuit against the state. Finding this to be unconstitutional, in addition, that Metal- Middleton is also in the process of doing um some sort of pushback. Um gave me some great information on what happened with Holden, um so I really, you know, the intent in speaking to them. They wanted to speak to us, see what we were thinking, again, strength in numbers, as select board Gallo had said, we the people, let's go back. And you referenced it too, Mr. Chair, um I think if everyone just thinks that we have to comply, you know, we'll just get pushed over. But let's take a look, let's take a look at, you know, the impact, um if we, you know, of the different avenues. But absolutely, I think we move forward and get these letters out and start reaching out to some of these other towns that are doing. What we're doing and get the word out there and spread, and, and hopefully more towns and communities are not nervous. To look for other ways to either compromise or push back on the state with this um, this demand.
Select board member Anderson.
Now, thank you, Mr. Chair, first of all, I concur with everything's been, been said so far. Um everyone knows that I'm, I'm a strong um opposition for unfunded mandates. I, I still think it's not this project, but several other projects for my entire. Time in municipal government, um it's just not fair to the citizens and towns, so I, I would definitely send these letters out. And I think we should fight the good fight.
So a, a question, uh I, Amanda, I know you got a lot going on, so if you need assistance from any of the board members, whether it be. Jim, Bill, Michelle, or Chris to, uh you know, I've, I've done my iterations, uh I'm done, uh these were based on conversations I had. With state rep Vaughn, uh with uh, with uh state rep Soder in Bellingham. Where they're running, uh they're, they've asked for a waiver, uh so I think, you know, if, if you. If any of the board members want to chime in to Amanda and, and offer some assistance, uh I've done my writing. And uh I, I, I can't write no more, but I did provide after reading them a couple of times my comments. And if it's possible, if we can have these completed for viewing, because on Tuesday, the twenty-seventh, we're gonna do a working group with. Planning and E D C, and Kevin, my question to you is, could we add to vote the letters at that meeting? Or where it's a working session?
As, yeah, as long as it's a um agenda item, you know, I mean, I think we should put it on if you plan on discussing it more. We should make it clear that it's an agenda, but we're gonna have a posted meeting, um our meeting will be a, a regular meeting. So we could add to the agenda, generally, it's, you know, a joint meeting with A B C or whatever, but yeah, I think if. If there's further discussion on tweaking or finalization of it, we should at least list it out on the agenda so we can deliberate on it. Uh but it's certainly, it can do that, um and then, Amanda, if we, when we make changes, if you can just accept all and then. Make those changes that were noted, I, I want to be able to read, it doesn't look like Joe worked off of my edited version, first of all, uh. The governor's name is, is spelled wrong, and there's a couple of those things that I, I have edits on as well, so. I'll look at it before we circulate it as well, um but just, yeah, we, we, there's a couple of things I need to change. I, I think the R E Amanda two needs to be more expanded, not just MBTA housing, there's a couple of things that I had made on, on a prior version. It doesn't look like it, it carried forward, so I need to, I need to uh, we, what I'll do is, we'll, we'll, we'll in, internally. Clean it up, accept it, write it up, and then we can uh, we can make it more available for the board to provide any uh comments, if that works.
How's that sound to?
And, Mr. Chair, I have one more um question, if that's okay.
Certainly.
Um Kevin, I, I'd like to see, you know, one of the things that um. Milton really recommended is that we, you know, the town managers and administrators really reach out. And he said that they had an excellent conversation with Holden's town um manager in terms of their process. And how he was really instrumental with that lawsuit, so. I, I don't know if you've had the opportunity to reach out to any other um town managers or administrators in terms that those are, that we've heard that have been going through this. Um process, and, and if that's something you think we could um start to do.
Yes, and I already have, I shared a number of um those dialogues with, with the chair directly, I will, we'll compile that.
Okay.
We have a, we're fortunate enough, at least in Norfolk County, to have a Norfolk County manager's listserv. Which is all the town managers and town administrators in Norfolk County, um this dialogue's been going on for a couple of years. And more so recently, um the town of Milton uh has um, you know, the, the town administrator in Milton, Nick. Uh Milano has had numerous back and forths, obviously, because that's someone that's been. Um as well as uh Brookline's done a lot of work, they have, they have the benefit of having internal town council. Um so the dialogue will continue, get feedback, um including reaching out to Bellingham and um, you know, the communities that we've already referenced. So that work already, has already commenced, we'll gather that, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
You know, then, you know, what we've done in the past too, was uh provide, you know, if, if some of the managers through that. Through that group or even outside Norfolk County, who could pen a joint letter as well, we've done that on other positions. Um where, you know, the community managers have uh, have signed off or penned off on stuff too, that there might be some value in, but. Um obviously, I think at the state level, I think they really want to hear from the elected officials, so, but we'll continue those conversations.
Okay, great, thank you.
If I could just, if I could just add to that, I mean, I would, obviously, I think, well said, I think I'd like to see us at some point, Kevin. You know, I, I'd like to know personally, like how many, how many other uh, you know, town managers, select boards, you know, uh, you know, uh. All the towns that we talked about, the Norfolk Town Managers Group, how many of these people would actually support a, a joint meeting, a joint letter? Uh a joint press release, uh you know, uh uh I'd be, you know, I, I, I would support that. Uh I think it's very, very important to show how many elected officials uh in town managers just aren't willing to roll over on this. And we're gonna push back, I think, you know, I think it's very important, so that's all, I, I just, I'd like to see something like that as we progress.
Yeah, I think the, I think, again, there's gonna be, there would be a lot of reluctance on the appointed officials, particularly with this as a policy decision. You might have some that personally feel different than their elected bodies, who, you know, ultimately, they, they set policy. And, you know, the managers uh, um you know, see it through, so I think that, that could probably get a little hairy, but we can certainly. Coordinate the efforts through those individuals to their elected officials and come up with a collaborative uh, you know. Strength in numbers, as we've talked about, so duly noted.
Thank you.
I, I know Medway early on was one of the first ones.
Yeah, we, we joined with Medway on, when that was during public uh, public comment period before the um, the law was actually signed. And uh moved forward, um us and Medway pretty much kind of wrote, you know, the same letter. Um on our recommendations of changes and opinions on it, which didn't seem like much of it was, if any, was listened to, so. Um but I think, and Mike Boynton, the Medway Town Manager, has been very active on our listserv with his own personal opinion of it. Um but I don't know that Medway, I'm not, I, I need to confirm with Mike where Medway is from their um policy body. On where they stand on doing it, but they're close, you know, both Medway and probably even actually midfield um had concerns. Early on, I'm not sure where they stand today, but Bellingham definitely has expressed opposition.
You, you know, it's funny, today I met a, I was down in Newport, Rhode Island, and I met a, a uh young lady from Millis. And uh we were talking and she told me she's from Millis, and I saw I'm from Rentham. And she asked me, she goes, what, what is your town doing about the MBTA housing? I said, funny you say that, you should tune into our meeting tonight, and I explained to her what I do, she goes, Millis, when they got the, the order. They just wrote the zoning and said, that's it, and she goes, no discussion, she goes, it's good that you're having the discussion, I wish you luck that you, you succeed. But I just wish Millis had the discussion and not just did the zoning and just let it roll, so you know, it's. It, it, I, I think that goes quantum uh for, for the, you know, people, you know, because we're here to listen. We've heard it loud and clear in the past, and we're doing what's right, so uh hopefully everyone's available for, I think it's. Amanda, did we say seven P M. on the twenty-seventh?
Yes.
Yes.
And it's gonna be a Zoom, and then those, those letters you recently shared with me, Kevin, could those be made public to the rest of the board from? Uh was it Brookline and then the one from Milton?
Uh yeah, I can share that with the board, but I wouldn't want them sharing it beyond that, that was, you know, internal kind of communication discussions. But yeah, just so I could put them on into a cohesive document, the board can just see the uh conversations amongst, you know, the management. From those particular places, so you can all see the same message.
I think the one.
Not for public.
The, the one from Milton was, that was a little bit different, wasn't it?
Yeah, their public um stuff that Milton has actually, you know, wrote letters, their, their public letter that uh, that the division. Or Secretary of Housing in uh Livable Communities now, I think they're calling it, um those letters are certainly, those are all public. As well as the response from the town as well, yeah.
Yeah, alright, it, it's a.
It was more about the email chains that were not meant to be public.
Okay, alright, so I think we have a mission on this, let's go on to the next thing, any other questions, Jim?
Uh no questions, Mr. Chair.
Nice, uh let's go over to tab ten, and this is an update on La Familia. I know, I saw Deb was on earlier, but we lost her, I don't know if she's back. But uh I actually uh reached out to our building commissioner. And uh. And had a conversation with them, because, you know, I, I really wanted to get a true understanding, and I, Kevin and Amanda were on the email. Of what's happening, you know, why are we here, we're, why are we here with this, and uh. And I think, Bill, I don't know if you were there for the conversation, I know you were, you were down on a personal business at the building. I want to call, and if you heard some of the conversation, but basically, what I'm hearing is. The intent was to keep the interior of the space the way it was, and they were just gonna replace windows and doors and a little bit of work on the exterior. But in actuality, they went and they did do some renovations on the inside, uh increased capacity. But in doing so, they did it uh without going to the proper channels. And may have exceeded their limits, uh what they could have for septic, what they could have for, you know, restroom facilities. And so uh, you know, and I, I always play the devil's advocate, I stay in the middle. And for what I'm reading from John's email, my conversation, John uh, John Naff. The uh two people at the Board of Health, it's, it's John, and the other gentleman's name is, it begins with a G.
So, well, John and J- John Naff, Building Commissioner, and John Robertson is the health agent. Matt Tanis is also is the environmental agent with regard to uh Title Five and Septic.
So they've all sat down, and they've actually asked to have a meeting with their contractor to go through everything. Uh it, they, they gave them a, they guidelines of what needs to be done, which is to get a, a set of architectural plans. Doing their due diligence to make sure that they meet their occupancy load, uh I was going through the plumbing code with John today. And based on the facility, based on what they have for, for uh lavatories, urinals and toilets. Their, their maximum capacity is a hundred and twenty, I think they kind of added forty seats, so it's to the one twenty, so it's something they gotta get a set of plans. Uh I, I personally, talking to John, I gave him a timeline, what I thought, you know, the timeline I had before was not knowing that. They haven't had a full set of plans for the inside, and there's all this other stuff, but this, I, I don't foresee this restaurant opening. This month and possibly not next month, uh I was optimistic, my wife and I drove by Saturday, I said, hey, hopefully they're open. Because we were gonna stop there for dinner, and the signs are saying coming soon, but that's about it, so I, I don't know what the will of the board is. I don't want to hurt anybody, uh I, I want to help small business, but I know we've given timelines. And here it is, you know, we're supposed to be, the thought was mid-January, end-January, middle-February. And don't hold me to it, but I, I, based on my conversation with John, don't see it through the end of March, but I could be wrong. So the will of the board, uh I know, Bill, you've uh, you, you've expressed a lot of concern, what's your thoughts?
Uh, Mr. Chair, you know, it, it is what it is, um they have their license, they can't utilize it till they get their occupancy permits. Uh certainly seems to me that they're basically doing whatever they want without permits, I think they've made it more than difficult. On all of our licensing boards in town, and um. They need to get their act together and get it built correctly and safely, I mean, if there's, and listening to the conversation. And listening to the conversation earlier with John while he's at the building department, they're uh. For for people that own three other restaurants, they're they're really not um. They're really not making an effort to 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 do what's right. Uh, I think as far as the town itself, the town of Rantham, the board, so the select board has done bent over backwards to try and help these folks. And it is what it is. If they open, they open and no one's gonna sign off on to it's correct, so we just. It is, we wait.
And to add to it, it not only has the board, the select board bent over backwards from, but I'm seeing that the Board of Health. And the Building Commissioner and the Fire Department have all done so. And so it's, it's been a community effort to get this business up and running. A select board member, Gallo, any comments?
Yeah, no, I would echo the comments. Your selectman Harrington's, uh, I, as you know, I was very, I am a very, very big supporter and I was willing to give them. Uh, a lot of benefit of the doubt, but after reading this email. Chain and and seeing the backend, I mean, my my next question is, is what other authority do we have? Like, can we find? And not that I wanna get into start finding people per day, but I think we at least need to have a conversation that uh. They're at this point, that what we're acting good in good faith. And in my humble opinion is they're starting not to act in good faith and. Um, that's frustrating to me because I was, we were so uh accommodating. And so is our, like you said, our Board of Health, our fire uh uh department, our our building commissioner. So at this point, what what do we, you know, what kind of um? What kind of um penalties or what kind of? Action do we have to kind of encourage them to do the right thing? And 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 get these issues resolved without wasting any more of our. Of our uh board's time and our, you know, our employees' time.
Uh, it is, I don't think there's any penalties we can do, uh you know, I think we have a. Pretty much, we have a, not a one-time shot, but we have a. We have a primary one-time shot and then we have kind of a secondary shot. The one-time shot is. In December, when the license up for renewal will not renew it. We we've decided to renew it based on the information they provided us.
Yeah. Which I, which I support that decision. I still do. What I'm saying is, Kevin, are you sure there's no fines we can? There there's nothing we can do to to, you know, to really uh push them across the finish line here and to do the right thing?
No, you can't compel anybody to open anything. So, I mean, they, you know, they're paying their fees.
Paying their taxes, they're paying their fees.
Yeah, everything is paid up. I mean, the issue is that to Slum and Harrington's point is they they just don't open. They can't operate until they have a health permit, until they have an occupancy permit. Then they stay closed and they pay those things, but to compel them, the only thing that this board has. The ability to do would be to um have a hearing. Uh, a hearing for a potential suspension or revocation of the license. Um. Which is an option. I I mean, one one caveat is we don't have anybody showing up at the window asking for a liquor license. Um, so it just would be somewhat like, I would be much.
Yeah, we don't, but we also shouldn't be, uh, you know, our time shouldn't be wasted and 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 nor should our uh. And nor should our employees' time be wasted. And I just don't like when people, you know, again, I'm I'm a supporter of this restaurant. But I don't like when I feel like we're being taken advantage of.
Yeah, I mean, likewise, I I don't have a lot of sympathy. I mean, you can go back and look at. Our meetings when over eighteen months ago, I told them that.
Yeah, to get a set of plans.
Process is gonna take a while. Don't wait. I've said multiple times. Don't wait on the plan review for that. This, I think. They went into it blindly or arrogantly, I don't know. But they definitely went into this that it was a restaurant before, why can't we just open? Um, which is not the case. It was barely a restaurant before. They had a million issues. Um, and the issue now is that it's not the code. It's been shuttered and closed for over four years. Um, you're starting, and the minute a restaurant closes, nothing's grandfathered. You have to do the whole review process. And I have said this uh to them, on the operator in public meetings multiple times. So, to say that the town has bent over backwards, honestly, understatement as you guys have said. Um, not only have we had multiple conversations, uh, you know, on these meetings, but. Internally, um, the the, I think from the code enforcement side, uh, building, you know, health. Fire, they've done everything they can and um asking for stuff is slow and tedious at best.
And the other thing is, they're not even here. They're not even here. I understand the meeting went long, but we're talking about your restaurant. And you got, they got off the call. They're not even here right now. Which is borderline infuriating to me. So, I I I'd be open at this point to have a hearing if if that would be the will of the board. You know, they just need to, they. Yeah, I mean, again, I love small business, I support small business, but please don't take advantage of us. And our generosity and our kindness and waste our time. I have zero tolerance for that, being a small business owner myself. No one allows me to do that. So unfortunately, I'm not gonna allow. In my, you know, I'm only one vote, but I'm not gonna allow them to do that at this point.
Board member Rose.
I think it's been eloquently stated by the fellow uh select board members and by our town manager.
Select board member Anderson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I think the, that's where I can describe it. Because I'm very disappointed with the uh, with the restaurant. I thought that they'd be further along. And um, I agree with everyone else, I mean. I don't know what the next step would be, but definitely uh, doesn't look like it's gonna work out.
Yeah, I, a- a- and I I, I know, it's, it's hot because. We don't wanna start out on a bad foot with a new business, but in the same token is we don't wanna be walked over. Uh, I think we need to really uh. You know, the 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 only thing you could do at this point is probably a cease and assist because they don't have a permit. For the interior construction and and uh. He's waiting, uh, John's waiting on plans, but you know, it's. It it's a hard thing. I think lesson learned is if there's any way on. On re- on issuing new licenses that we give them a timeframe to be open. And if they're not open in that timeframe, that the license will be revoked if we can do that. It's a lesson.
I don't think we could do that, Mr. Chair. I think everything we've done, we've done by the letter of the law.
Yeah, I'm thinking future. I'm saying in future, in this case, you know, it, we either have a hearing. To pull the license or we just let them go through the motions. And if they're not open by the end of December, it's not renewed. You know, it's, it's kind of our options is the either have a hearing and pull it or let the rest of the year. Roll out. If we get somebody who shows an interest and needs a license. Do we change our 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 course of of uh of our path of travel here? I don't know. It's just. You you know, you, Chris, it's it's, you you said it, you're a small business owner. No one's giving you these chances. But you're a small business owner, you understand what it takes to be a small business owner.
I do, Joe, but when I say I'm gonna do something, I friggin' do it. That's the difference between me and these people. And that's the problem I have. My name and my reputation is everything in my business. So, again, that's fine. I guess we just grin and take it. Uh, but I let it be known that very, very disappointed, you know, Rantham loves small business. We bend over backwards. Go talk to all the other restaurants in town and see how accommodating this board has been and this town administration has been. To these other restaurants, you know, uh, it's just frustrating that this is the response we get and they're not even here at the meeting. So, again, I guess we grin and bear it and we just, you know, continue to, you know, encourage them to finish the project and hopefully. In a couple of months from now, we can all laugh about this while we're having a meal over there. It's just very bad taste in my personal mouth. Uh, no pun intended, uh, regarding this process is all. And I'm sorry that I'm rambling, so I'll digress.
I I think we need to uh get a response to them. You know, like I said, they did, they were at the beginning of the meeting. Did they have technical difficulties? Because a few people did have, I don't know. But I think we need to send them a strong response on how we feel. You know, Kevin, you agree, we need to let them know they're not here to hear it, but the sentiment of this meeting needs to be expressed to them that we're disappointed.
Mr. Chair, if I may, that the the letter, uh, the the. What they need to do is they need to get the issues resolved with the, our code enforcement, building, public safety. Uh, public health, uh, tho- those are the, those are the issues. I mean, the 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 business is the business, they own it. The liquor license is an asset of the company. We elected, you know, a year and a half, eighteen months ago to hold, let them hold on to it. So it is what it is. We renewed it. They can't utilize the liquor license until they get an occupancy permit. But the the issues that they just continuously do improvements on the building at their own pace. Without permitting, without architectural plans. Uh, that's, that's what, that's the letter that needs to be sent, either a cease and assist until they follow through with. The board's, uh, building department and and code enforcement. To the letter of law or they're just not gonna be able to work on the building. Kevin, your thoughts?
So if they're doing work without a permit, we technically can shut them down for that.
Well, the 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 work they're doing is a little reorganization inside in its seating. If they've affected, they've increased seating, they've infa- they've affected. The path of egress inside the building, so it's physically not banging nails and doing things of that nature. They did do a little bit of, I think, a little bit of a reconstruction to the bar, which when they did that, it prompted them to do a. Uh, another hand sink, which they referenced in our last meeting with them, is that they had to add a hand sink. And the reason why is. They reconfigured something which which then prompted a hand sink. But what? The Board of Health is looking for, and I think Bill may have heard the conversation, they wanna make sure in 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 restaurants. Anything that has food, whether it be dishwasher, prep sink, goes into what's called an indirect drain, which. It's not a hot pipe, it's goes into a screen that you can clean the screen out and take it out. And they have no record of which sinks are indirect drains, which ones are direct drains, which ones go into the grease trap. They have no documentation and it's a design build, which means someone's gotta put it on paper. And that's all. One's asking for is to get us the documents on paper so we know where we're going. We need you to do your calculations to make sure the septic can handle the additional seating. We need to make sure you have enough toilets, urinals and labs. So that your patrons can come in and and have a personal leave break during dinner and and be, but that's what he's looking for. He's looking for a document. I think John has been overly accommodating, you know, i- i- if if. This was somebody else, I think there would have been a cease and an assist on that building and no work would have happened. But the only permit they have issued currently is for windows, a new, a new entry door, repair a ramp and repair some siding. Right. So I think we need to give John the authority to move forward and start enforcing some stuff and giving some deadlines. Is that something we would like to do?
I don't think that's necessary, Mr. Chair. I think honestly, unless this board plans on taking action, I think. Honestly, to be frank, I think the conversation is over. I think it needs to be handled from the code enforcement, like Slugman Harrington was saying. Administration and code enforcement handle this every single day. Doesn't need any, any delegation of duties. That's, that's what they're vested with. Um, unless this board want, is is advocating to take. Enforcement action, whether it be a suspension or revocation of their liquor license. I don't, I I I frankly don't think there's any more discussion until it comes forward whether or not we renew it or not. Um, you know, in in six months, uh, you know, we'll work, we'll work, uh. I'll work with them and, you know, and make sure that uh from a code enforcement standpoint, that all three of those. Uh, enforcing departments, you know, move forward with what we need. I mean. I can't tell you how many times they've been told they need drawings, they need drawings. You can't just do what they wanna do. You can't just show up and say, we're gonna put this here. They haven't complied with the architecture and drawing requirements to show that it's gonna work, that it meets code. Um, there's plumbing permits that are needed. Um, there's plumbing waivers. They probably have to go to the uh state, if they keep the seating where they have, they have to go to the state board. Um, for a waiver on the, on the bathroom facility. So there's a number of way beyond, uh, you know, windows, doors type of thing and.
Why can't we let the, why, why isn't the building inspector and the plumbing inspector enforcing the code? If there's no permits, you shouldn't be able to work there. How difficult is that?
Well, that's what it's at. That's why they're asking for the plans.
Well, no, Kevin just said, we have no purview over that, but I'm, and he's saying they deal with that. Let them deal with it then. Why aren't they pushing, why aren't they enforcing the code?
They are.
Question I'm asking, why aren't they enforcing the code?
They are now. That's why things haven't progressed, because they haven't, they haven't met and asked for what they've uh been requesting, so. Um, we'll continue moving, you know, moving it forward. I think to some degree, they all, they too. Like with all, you know, businesses, wanna be able to try to work with them as much as possible, but they're beyond the point where. Um, you know, they're, they're exhausted by this as well. And and that's where we're at. So that's why I think this, the discussion is kind of all coming. You know, we've asked countless times, you haven't done it yet, but yet you wanna move forward with things. We're not gonna allow it. Um, and that's where we're at, so.
I just know, uh, can I just say one more thing? I just know, and when I owned, when I owned all of my real estate. In the various communities that I owned real estate, if we ever would try to do work without a permit. Uh, not only would they find us, they'd find us per day until we got. The permit pulled and the action remedied. So that's why I asked that question about fines and fines per day and. It's part of code enforcement.
But I I don't know if they're actually doing any physical work beyond at this point. I think they've done their stuff.
Doesn't matter, the work's been done without the proper permits, Joe.
So what happens is I think if the, once the permit is issued, they can go in and if the wor- work is not the code, they make them do it over. You know, there's, there's so many different, there's so many different, it's, and it's hard for me because I pull permits. You know, I was talking to Kevin the other day, I'm pulling a permit for a restaurant in Hingham. And before the Board of Health, the Board of Health had to sign off on the kitchen plan before it went to building to get a permit. I just got the permit issued today. And it's, it's, and I, that's a part of my email, Kevin, you know, to to John, is the process the problem? And the he, the answer was no, the the problem was it's that they said, we're gonna go in and use the same floor plan and then they changed things. They bought no kitchen, they bought, so that's what, you know, it's, we got a permit in the window, it it it, you know. I I joke all the time, we were joking today with John, you know, you just get a basic permit and do what you want. People do that. They think, cause I have that actual card in the window uncovered. No, it's not. It's, it's uh, it's, for you have to state on the permit what's being done and that's what they're.
Of course you do.
Yeah, you know, and and I I went through this and that's how I ended up building Crosby's is because. This is what John was asking for at Crosby's. I need a set of plans to tell me what you're doing. And they said that he was being difficult. And as soon as we got a set of plans, we breezed right through the process. And it's, I've been through this before. So, you know, I think like to Kevin's point, let let them do their thing. I think from my conversation with John, he knows. Uh, and Bill, you can attest, where he knows we're not happy. He knows we've given him, you know, kind of some timelines. But the time, we can give them all the timelines we want, but they're just gonna go with their own pace. The only thing we have, they're not open by the end of the year. We don't renew the license at this point unless we have a need for it, then we pursue a different avenue.
Okay.
Does that sound like a reasonable thing?
Yeah.
Yes.
You know, I I I, like I said, I went by Saturday. My wife likes the escrow soup there and I was like, let's go see if they're open. And we ended up going to Cafe Assisi, got takeout. And uh, even Derek was asking, what's happening with them? You know, he wants to see them open because. You wanna keep restaurant business in Rantham. You don't want it leaving Rantham. So it's, it's, it's a, you know, John, uh, John Cox will tell you the same thing and so won't uh, uh. John uh.
T J.
T J, no, I I'm I'm doing, I, I, John Carroll will tell you the same thing. We don't wanna see people leave our town to dine in another town. We wanna see them stay in the town, cause it just makes it easier. All right, I think we've talked about that enough. Let's go over to tab eleven. And we have uh a gift acceptance and we have a letter. From uh Donna Martin and I'd ask Bill to read the letter into the record.
Yes, Mr. Chair, uh, letter dated Friends of Rantham Senior Set- Citizens, Inc. January twenty second, twenty twenty four. Board of Selectmen, gentlemen, the Friends of Rantham Senior Citizens, Inc. Are pleased to enclose a check for the amount of five thousand dollars for the purpose of funding designated activities. Programs and services at the Rantham Senior Center for the benefit of the Rantham seniors who wish to participate. This grant is to be used towards the following activities, programs and services in twenty twenty four for the Rantham seniors. Activity instructors, lifeline protection plan, bus transportation for senior trips. It is understood that the treasurer of the Council on Aging will provide an accurate accounting of the disposition of the funds to the treasurer. Of the Friends of Rantham Senior Citizens, Inc. on a regular basis. We are pleased to provide this grant to the town of Rantham for the benefit of. The Rantham seniors, sincerely Donna Ma- Donna E. Martin, Vice President, Treasurer. C C Accounting Department, Kenner Farling, Chairwoman of the COA, Board of Members of the Friends of Rantham Senior Citizen, Inc.
Any questions before we go any further to a vote? All right, being done, this time a chair attend a motion to accept a donation in the amount of five thousand dollars from the Friends of Rantham Senior Center, Inc. For the activity, activity instruction, lifeline, protection plans, bus transportation for senior trips.
Double, double.
Motion made by Selectman Anderson, seconded by Selectman Harrington. Is there any further discussion? Being now, we'll go to roll call vote. Motion made by Selectman Anderson, seconded by Selectman Harrington, is there any further discussion, being now we'll go to roll call vote. Select, uh, Board Member Anderson.
Anderson, yes.
Select Board Member Botash, yes, Select Board Member Gallo.
Gallo, yes.
Select Board Member Harrington.
Harrington, yes.
Select Board Member Rouse.
Ross, yes.
That's five zero, tab twelve. This is sort of like a ceremonial thing, sometimes it's in January, sometimes it's in February, sometimes it's in March. But we, in our budget, we allow a hundred thousand dollars a year for snow and ice. And the reason why we funded at that amount is if we exceed it, we can't ever lower it in the future. So this net spending of, uh, we've exceeded the one fifty by an additional sixty one thousand eight hundred and seventy three dollars and seventy six cents. For these nuisance storms we've had, it's really been not pushing a lot of snow, but more so treating and things of that nature. Uh, is there any questions on this before we go any further?
One question, um, Ms. Chair, so, uh, Kevin, does that mean winter's over?
Don't say it, don't jinx.
We've been fortunate, I mean, um. This is about where we're, we're kinda with last year's as well, the big cost and, and people always, you know, we haven't had any major storms. Um, all of the, the, first of all, salt is extremely expensive. Um, and all these small salting events add up considerably. We, fortunately, we haven't had a ton of, um, there's been a couple of storms where we've had to brought, bring contractors in, um. And we do have one contractor that does assist with some salt operations, just cause we don't have enough equipment to do it, but ultimately, uh. The, um, you know, it, it, it does add up, it does get expensive and. You know, I would just say on a five-year average, if you look at kind of a five-year average, we've run above three hundred thousand. Um, some years we've seen the older, you know, bigger storms upwards of, you know, seven hundred thousand, seven hundred fifty thousand. Uh, but on a five-year average, we've run about three hundred, we budgeted a hundred and fifty, um, you know, last year we had to make up. Some of that and, uh, you know, it's not, it's not a shock, it's not a surprise, um. You know, this is the annual notice just to, uh, you know, there's no vote or anything, but to just to inform you. That we're now, this is the only thing statutorily we're allowed to, um, you know, per, uh, chapter forty-four, section, uh, thirty-one D. Allowed a deficit spend, so, um, I wish I had that. I, I hope you're accurate, Bill.
So what happens if we spend more money, you'll just send another letter?
No, um, it's just notice once we hit it.
Oh, okay.
Then, I know we'll have to have the conversation, we talk about, um, free cash, like we do every year. And part of that free cash map will be to deal with, uh, uh, addressing the. You know, has been an annual thing as well, addressing the snow and ice deficit.
Understood.
Yep.
All right, no other questions, let's go over to tab thirteen, update on the MECC.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Chair, this, I just wanted, not a whole lot of discussion, um, here, I just wanted to keep the board apprised. Um, the Board of Directors for both the, uh, Metacoment Regional Emergency Communication Center, also known as the MECC, which includes the Town of Rentham. As well as the South, uh, Southeastern Massachusetts Regional nine one one district, which is referred to as SEMREC. Which is located on High Rock, um, Road in Foxborough, just over the Rentham Line. Um, has, the last couple of years been discussing the potential of having discussions about more regionalization, um. The MECC currently, um, supports six communities, including Rentham, uh, the SEMREC in, supports four. Um, all of these, uh, PSAP centers and, you know, ultimately. Plan were to eventually look at, uh, opening up to allow additional communities. Um, to expand and ultimately, uh, share the cost of operating them, spread that out. As you may recall, the MECC, uh, as a, as a member, I've been the vice chair now for five years. Uh, we've decided to allow, uh, Mendon and Millville in. When we did that, um, you know, the Town of Rentham single-handedly saved about, you know, close to two million dollars on assessments. That State nine one one picked up, um, we've also lim, we've also reduced our assessment because the proportion of. Our assessment percentage of which were the second largest of the six, Franklin being number one and, and followed by Plainville. Um, actually reduced too, so we went from, I think, like a seventeen point eight down to a sixteen point three percentage of the share, so. Larger regionalization, um, conversations, as long as the service that's being provided. Um, isn't impacted, is, is a good thing. Um, we've received, uh, from all six, all sixteen, or fourteen rather. Um, chiefs from all fourteen member communities, both police and fire support to look at regionalizing. The regional centers, um, the potential of merging SEMREC and the MECC, there's a lot of effort that goes in outside of that conversation. I wanted to let this board know that we're, the, our board, um, including the ten members of the Board of Directors, uh, from between the two. Have signed a memorandum of agreement to have a subgroup to work on exploring what that might look like and a big part of that is. What does that look like for grants that are gonna become required, so applications to State nine one one. Um, and explore, you know, there's a, there's the whole board makeup. There's, um, we were formed under a, uh, a state legislative. Uh, they were formed, which was a, an available legislation, a statute that came available after the MECC was formed. That they went in and formed as a, as a separate district, so there's a lot of sort of nuances around that and, um, you know, ultimately. Funding breakdowns, board seats, uh, operations is just, um, you know, ultimately, a lot that has, has to happen to get us there. And at any point in time, if things don't make sense, um, both parties have mutually agreed, you know, can, can just separate from that, there's nothing binding. With the MOA we signed or the MOU, the Memorandum of Understanding, um. If it ever gets to a point where there is record, you know, and a merger. Uh, we would be looking at interminable agreement, which is a, a different document. Um, but we got a little ways to go there, uh, both, um, both executive directors, senators have been working collaboratively. Uh, both executive directors are part of this working group. Um, the working group for the MECC will be, uh, the Franklin Town Administrator and myself. Uh, including the MECC Executive Director and then the working group for SEMREC will be, um, the Eastern Town Administrator. And the Norton Town Manager and, um, the SEMREC Executive Director, so this is essentially three and three from each. Uh, we'll be working out and hammering on a number of these things to kind of bring back and update to the, our full boards and. I think it's, um, I think it's the right direction, we've been hearing it from our members, our, you know, our chiefs and public safety personnel, I think it's. Um, it makes sense and, um, looking at, you know, ultimately going to Foxborough and SEMREC and figuring out what happens to, uh. The Norfolk facility, which would, which would either be taken over probably by, um, State nine one one. Uh, as, you know, they're looking for facilities, but with, or a backup redundant, uh, center potentially. Uh, but would close as a primary PSAP, um, long-term, um, but. So I think, uh, I think the effort's good, I just wanted you to be aware of, about what's happening, um, it's been a lot of kinda conversations that. Really up until last week have not really, uh, surmounted in anything, both boards have had general conversations, but officially, we had a joint board meeting. And all, uh, a three-hour meeting, all ten, uh, members of the Board Directors agreed. Uh, voted on and approved the MO, MOU to start this discussion, so. Um, unless there's questions, I don't have anything more to add, I think, um, you know. Our, our, our role as the Board of Directors is to look at the policies and everything else, if we're hearing it unanimously across the board from an operation standpoint through our chiefs. And our public safety who are our end users, I think we can't, um, we can't ignore and not look at it, so that's where I'm at with it.
Right, any questions for Kevin, Jim?
Um, no questions, I know that, uh, you know, I was heavily involved when we initially. You know, merged for our regionalization for dispatch. I know that Kevin's got his hands full, it's a very complex operation. And, um, I wish you all, Kevin, and keep us posted.
Absolutely, thank you.
Chris.
No questions, thank you.
Bill.
No questions. No questions.
Michelle, do you have any questions?
No questions, thanks for the update, Kevin.
Yeah, no problem.
Let's go over to Town Administrator's report.
Thank you, Ms. Chair, I'll, I'll keep it brief, uh, just a quick update, I mean, my, my. This week, in the next week and really over the next, uh, you know, six weeks will be heavily budget-driven. Um, my, uh, my days have been scheduled all day today through this week and in the next week on. Having one-on-ones, Mike King and I, um, this year will be the kind of the first year we're collaboratively taking that, I've involved him a little bit more. Uh, in the budget process, which is, which is a good thing. Um, and, and kinda giving him a little bit more, uh, leadership in that, but together, we're gonna, we're having meetings with department heads to review their department requests. Um, talk through where they're at, um, we're now just finally getting some. Um, numbers locked in for King Philip, uh, the. Health insurance numbers as well as Rentham Elementary School, who was a bit delayed this year. Um, with getting us those numbers, so those are sort of the big drivers. Retirement, you know, some of those non-discretionary costs that we have to plug in and really look at first, um, but over the next. Really kinda the next three to five weeks, we'll be flushing out, getting that budget down to, uh. A balanced budget, ultimately following the budget timeline schedule that we've proposed. Um, and looking for a presentation for the meeting in, the first meeting in April to the board. And ultimately getting to, uh, final adoption of the budget for our first meeting in May. Uh, and going through the process, um, in, you know, April, May with, with the finance committee, so. Um, things to look at, nothing real imminent dire that's standing out this year. Um, like everything, you know, there's a lot of requests and, you know, there's gonna be a lot of unmet, you know, needs, um. But I, you know, the, the department heads have taken a, done a great job, we've asked them, I've asked them, Mike's asked them to do. A lot more this year, um, as we did last year, just with, with, what they're responsible for. Again, working towards the GFWA budget, identifying goals within their budgets, they can then ultimately roll up to, um. The, the board's overall goals, overarching goals to make sure they're in alignment and to get more towards that, uh, you know. Streamline GFWA, Government Finance Office Association distinguished budget, which is, which is my goal. Um, so, nothing, nothing more there, but there'll, there'll be a lot of, uh. That's the next six weeks is gonna be heavy budget discussions and, and work. Um, the only other thing I had, Mr. Chair, is, uh. Uh, just that more of an update, it's not an agenda item, so I don't wanna really get into deliberation, but I just wanted to get the board's, um. Desire, I guess, uh, for a few, potential future agenda item. Uh, with regards to the letter that was received on February twelfth, that was penned by. Uh, Rio Cicetti from Helping Hands of America and Beth Bryson from Five Seventy Four Washington Street LLC. Um, on their, on their, um. I guess their assessment or interaction with the planning board. Um, obviously, the planning board is a separate regulatory elected board. Um, this board has no, you know, oversight over, I'm not. Fully sure what the ask is, um, unless it's more of just, you know, to be aware. Um, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't sound like they're making any direct allegations of any type of mis thing that, you know, I, I would be the one investigating. Um, so I, I think, I think it's more awareness and they're looking for. This board to be aware, I, I, again, without getting into too much conversation, I don't know what your thoughts are, if, if you think this warrants. A future agenda item and ask them to attend or. I guess kinda the sentiments around that versus the merits of what they're saying. Um, given that it's not an agenda item.
I, I personally, uh, rely on you for your guidance on that. You know, it's, I, I read the letter. Couple of times and as I read it, I had different interpretations of it. So I, I'm gonna rely on you, uh, to, to, you know, vet it and then come back with a recommendation on whether we pursue it. Uh, in a meeting or if it's just addressed in a letter form, that's just my thought. Uh, I don't wanna deliberate, but you know, if, uh, anybody else has any comments. Uh, Jim, any comments?
Yeah, I concur with, with your assessment on that.
Chris.
So I, I, again, I don't wanna deliberate, but I have had someone reach out to me on that with a lot of concerns. Uh, so I, I'm open to the world of board, but I'm also very open to. Putting it on the agenda and vetting the issue to see if there's anything that we can do or should do.
Bill.
Uh, like similar to yourself, Mr. Chair, I read the letter a couple of times, I'm not really, uh, I'm not really sure what they're asking for. Uh, so quite frankly, I, I'll leave it up to Kevin and, and Chris, uh, if it's something that we need to get some. Clarification from them and then have them. Come forward, uh, with a request of, you know, whatever, whatever it is that they want us. Uh, to investigate, you know, if we could get clarification, uh, that would be, I, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, I mean, as a chair, I mean, I guess, you know, to me, the same. Quote, right, I've been trying to interpret what it is that they're actually saying about, about another. Elected board that's responsible for regulatory functions, if the claim is more around procedural stuff. Again, it's other than this board just being notified about, this board has no oversight or direction of that, so. It might be more around education if the claim that they're not, you know, I think some of the. Position that they're taking in the letter, you, you know, the, the board can kind of to some degree, there's, there's, it's a public hearing. But the board and the chair decide a lot of those things on what they're gonna allow. Um, getting into specific, you know, dialogue and, and comments from, um. You know, particularly around, obviously, the towns, uh, peer review people are gonna be the ones to speak on everything. Whether they, you know, and they're, you know, they're not a non, they're a non-applicant. So of course, the applicant in the town are gonna be where the dialogue is, a, a citizen, if you will, observer. Is not gonna be afforded the same level of dialogue. Um, so that's just, a- again, I think, my perspective reading it, I, I just hear more of what, what they, what their claim is or what their action they're looking for. Um, would be helpful.
Yeah, I agree.
Michelle?
Yeah, I agree as well, without any further information besides what's in the letter, I don't. I don't quite know a lot of the details, so. In whichever way we can get that information would be helpful.
I would encourage Kevin to, through you, Mr. Chair, I would strongly encourage Kevin to reach back out and get further details. From, but, from what I know about the situation, although we may not have any direct. Authority over the planning board, we do have a thought, you know, we do, Kevin reports to us. And the town planner reports to Kevin, so indirectly there is. Oversight. So without getting into too much, I would strongly recommend that Kevin reach back out to the applicant. Try to get us more information. And then, maybe we can make a decision if it's just, if it justifies coming to this board.
I'm in support of that.
Yeah, I, I am also, yeah, well, well said, Chris.
Anything else, Kevin?
I have nothing else, Mr. Chair.
I know you, you, you were just saying a few minutes ago that you, you're tied up for the next three months on budget, we just gave you something else to do.
Yeah, these two weeks are, are just heavy book, relying on other, other people and scheduling, so, uh.
Really understand, uh, once again, I wanna thank Chris, I wanna thank you for your help with getting Sweat Fund, uh, uh, the public hearing. Kinda condensed, I think it went well, uh, a lot quicker, it was simpler. So I wanna thank you for your help and, uh, you know, Amanda, i- if any of the board members wanna help out with those letters. You know, please reach out to Amanda, cause I know she's got a lot going on, uh, we, we, we all do, uh. And, and Jim, we're glad to have you back, uh, Michelle tried filling your shoes last time.
I failed miserably, Jim, failed miserably.
Sign that letter.
I'm sorry.
Uh, Kevin or Amanda, when do we need to come in and sign that, uh?
Warrant?
Warrant, yeah.
Yeah.
He's gonna check with, uh, with Cindy to see when, but if you're, if you're.
I think she wanted to post it, um. I think she wanted to post it tomorrow, but I gotta, I gotta check if whether or not that she needs that for.
Through you, Mr. Chair, can someone just send us an email reminding us to come in, just so I don't forget?
Yeah, I, I have a meeting in Bellingham tomorrow morning, so I could bit down after Bellingham and do that, so I can get it signed tomorrow.
I will, uh, I'll reach out to Cindy, uh, we can confer, we'll confirm, um. I have a meeting, another meeting outside here in Norfolk County, but I will, uh, I'll check with her even tonight. And see when she needs to have that, I know the timing of what it has, I think she, she has a certain month before the actual. Uh, election date, um, so I think, I wanna say she was definitely this week. And I think even potentially tomorrow, is there anybody if it is tomorrow that couldn't come by? Or at least we need three. At least.
I can come by, I can come by tomorrow.
I can, I can, at some point I can come by.
Okay, I will confirm with her, but I, I thought she told me she wanted to get to it, get it posted Wednesday.
Jim, we the people. Ready for you.
Chairman, we got permission. Washington to adjourn this long meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So we had a motion made by Select Board Member Anderson, seconded by Select Board Member Rouse, we'll do a roll call vote. Select Board Member Anderson.
Anderson, yes.
Select Board Member Botash, yes, Select Board Member Gallo.
Gallo, yes.
Select Board Member Harrington.
Harrington, yes.
And Select Board Member Rouse.
Ross, yes.
And you did not fail immensely last time, you did a good job.
I did, I did. A lot to learn.
Thank you, everybody, and I will see you next Tuesday for the meeting, the EDC and the Planning Board. And, uh, look forward to it. Thank you.
Mr. Mr. Chair, can I just make sure that Selectman, uh, Anderson fixes his, his dial-up internet before the next meeting?
Hey, he's on, he's on, uh, what is it? Maybe the CDs.
Just kidding, Jimmy, we love you. I'm joking.
So, so Mr. Chair, since, uh, Selectman Gallo mentioned it, I would, I would ask that, uh, you, the Kevin or Amanda. Get me up to speed on, uh, my technology deficiencies.
We have that noted, uh, Jim, and, um. Man, we'll, we'll reach out. If we need you to, if we need advice, we'll let you know, but I think we're going to be able to address most of it, um. You know, remote, so we'll, we'll follow up.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night, thank you.